Welcome back to the afternoon session of the Landmarks Preservation Commission's Public Hearing and Public Meeting of June 24, 2025. We are resuming this afternoon with public hearing item number eight. And I will turn it over to Director of Preservation Cory Herala to take us through the afternoon agenda items.
All right, thank you. Starting with public hearing item eight, LPC 25-11243, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 497, lot 7502, 79 Spring Street in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. This is a store building designed by Richard Berger and built in 1884 to 85. The application is to install a flagpole and repaint the first floor infill, piers, cornice, and canopy.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Hopefully, everyone is staying cool today. My name's Ethan Kaplan. I'm with Peterson Rich Office, as well as Nathan Rich is on the call as well, principal and founder of Peterson Rich Office. And we'll be sharing the presentation today for 79 through 81 Spring Street. So the property or reference is located on the edge of the Soho Cast Iron District, highlighted there in the red, originally constructed in 1885. It's a Richard Bergen Burger building. And the 1940 Tax Department photo is included here as the reference. And what we're proposing and what we're here to review with you all today is the repainting of the ground floor architectural elements. So essentially, everything below the cornice, wood, window frames, cast iron, as well as the addition of a new flag at the Crosby elevation along the, or close to the intersection of Spring and Crosby. And these are just a selection of the historic elements, both a mix of cast iron wood, all of which we are proposing to repaint a Benjamin Moore historic black. And what we've gathered here to share with you all is just some examples throughout the district of differentiated ground floor versus upper stories, which is what we are proposing. The current building is painted a afternoon tea is the specific color. And we would simply be proposing to, in the spirit of a number of properties throughout the district, repaint the ground floor, the proposed black that you'll see later in the presentation. So down the street from us, we have 100 Crosby, which has the black base with the maroon upper stories. And then we have 92 Mercer, which is the black with the green. And these kind of complementary colors throughout the district of darker base with warmer, richer tones above is consistent with a number of the buildings we've seen throughout the district. And this is more or less what we're proposing with 81 Spring Street. It's painting the base, the black as shown here, and then leaving the stories above the afternoon tea color, which is already existing on the property. This is the visualization of the Spring Street side, which shows again all of those elements below the cornice painted out black. And then turning over to the Crosby Street elevation, again, all of those elements painted black, including the canopy and entry to the residential building adjacent to the retail front that is part of our scope. And then looking in more detail at the discussion of the flag, this is the existing flag on Spring Street. And the idea is that we would mirror the detailing and attachment from the Spring Street side onto the Crosby side. So you'll notice that the flag is supported on a additional steel tube that is mounted directly to the wooden frame so as to reduce impact on any of the brick or stonework of the building. And the proposed flag would be the second window or would be located in the second window from the corner. This is a view here down Crosby Street, where you have the canopy of the building in the distance and then the corner in the foreground. Turning the other direction, looking down Crosby. And then the main kind of thoroughfare within this part of the district of Spring Street, looking both towards the Albers and the station further down the way, back towards the store itself. And you can see here, the proposed flag location is highlighted in red. Again, the detailing and such would match the existing pole on Spring Street. We would be locating the flagpole approximately 10 foot, seven inches from the corner, and it would be placed within the jam of the window, again, to minimize any impact, the brick or stone for that attachment method. And these are the details of that attachment, as I said, very similar to what is already existing on the Spring Street side. And finally, the elevation here with it shown in the second window from the corner. And again, the proposal is really the inclusion of that flag as well as the painting of the architectural elements below the cornice. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions, Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg.
So has any paint analysis been done of the exist, the original colors?
So there is a MOU that contains the paint analysis, I believe, was completed in 2000, which is where the afternoon tea comes from. So that is the color of the base building.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? All right, we'll move to public testimony and we'll come back to you. And we have one person who signed up to speak in person, Jeremy Woodoff.
Thank you. My name is Jeremy Woodoff. I'm speaking on behalf of the Victorian Society, New York. And thanks to my heatwave attire, I'm also speaking on behalf of the memory of Margot Gale and the gone but not forgotten friends of cast iron architecture, which in the 1960s and 70s worked to prevent the destruction of Soho by the Lower Manhattan Expressway and then helped to get it designated as a historic district. We maintain our position that there are too many flagpoles and banners in this historic district. Their original function of directing people past long rows of abandoned and derelict buildings is no longer relevant. This storefront already has one flagpole and banner. Because it's a corner building, a small bracket sign on the shorter facade would be appropriate. This, along with the prominent sign painted on the storefront window and the freestanding sign regularly set up on the vault lights, would be more than sufficient identification. Thank you.
I know that there is no one else in the room to speak on this item, so I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Those joining us, I assume, who wish to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function, after which you'll be promoted to panelist. We ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and we'll have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker will be Richard Moses.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Richard Moses with the Lower East Side Preservation Initiative, also known as LESBI. Regarding this application for the installation of a flagpole and repainting of the commercial base, we do not object to this proposal. As flagpoles with flags have long characterized the Soho Cast Iron Historic District, and the repainting of the commercial base will not destroy or damage any of the building's protected historic features or detract from the building's architecture. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Pete Davies.
Hello. Yes, my name is Pete Davies. I am testifying on behalf of the Broadway Residents Coalition in Soho. I am a residential occupant of this block. I've lived here for over 45 years. And I just, we support the painting of the storefront infill. However, we do oppose the installation of a new flag and flagpole. If you look at the imagery that the applicant has provided, page 21 and 22, you will see that there are no flags whatsoever on the western facades running up and down Crosby Street. There are some small flags on the other side of the street. But within the Soho Cast Iron Historic District, there is no flag or flagpole on the facades of the building facing Crosby Street from the big cast iron buildings. So this would, it's unprecedented to have a flag here. As the Commissioners noted last week when they were discussing an application for a flag on Broadway. If this one gets it, the next one will want it, and then the next, and the next. And I think it's much better that a small bracket sign be used along Crosby Street. The identifying flag on Spring Street is ample presence for MoMA. And they've been a good tenant here, and we welcome them to stay. But the additional flag is not necessary. It's unprecedented. And I do hope, as do others in the Broadway Residents Coalition, hope that you will reject this portion of their application. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else joining us, I assume, who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. I'll note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends mixed approval, approving of the paint but objecting to the flagpole.
So would you like to respond to any of the comments that we've heard?
To think with respect to the Crosby Street corridor and speaking to the particularity of flags there, most of the buildings between Spring Street and the intersection with, I believe it's Broadway or Houston, are the back doors to many of the retail fronts on that street. MoMA is one of the only retailers that has a public entry on Crosby, and therefore, we felt the flag was a way to signal and indicate that entry below the canopy. And the risk of other retailers potentially adding flags or other signage is perhaps minimized by the fact that this street is largely used as the back door for many of the retailers who face the other directions.
Okay. Commissioners, any final questions? Commissioner Lutfi.
So what if this, what if the existing banner was moved so that it was more on the corner or in a, would that be helpful for MoMA? It doesn't have to be right over the door. People just need to know that the MoMA store is there.
The proposed flag location or the existing?
No, the existing. I'm just, I'm just suggesting maybe there's another alternative, and I was wondering what you thought of that.
I think it's something we could evaluate. I do think the signaling of entry on Spring Street is important, given that prominent retail, or I will say that's largely the pedestrian traffic is along that street. So which is why we'd prefer to keep the existing flag in its location. But certainly something we could consider further.
Yeah, it is true that that's why I was saying maybe the corner, so you still get the spring benefit. And then you pick up a little bit of the Crosby. That's just a thought. Now I have, now I have a question, another question about paint. So the buildings that you pointed out as examples where black paint is used at the base, what's the, what paint is used above the base for the windows and also for the cornice? Because what seems to be going on in this building is that this brownish color is throughout the building and on the cornice. So I, so in other words, there would be a change at the base. Is that what's going on on the other buildings?
You're talking the very high cornice here or simply?
And the windows, too. They're all sort of in the same tone. The buildings, well, everything painted is kind of, everything with color other than brick is kind of in the same tone right now. So the change at the base would, you know, would make it a little less visually unified. And then for these buildings that you pointed out, what's going on with them from a unity standpoint?
I would have to verify that the very top cornice matches the green or if it is the black. But that would be a question that we could follow up with some additional information on.
Okay.
Our proposal would be to minimize the impact above the ground floor retail for 81 Spring at least.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Chen.
Getting back to the the entrance issue in terms of indication relating to the flags. You have had two entrances on that location for many years, correct? The MoMA store does have two entrances, one on Spring and one on Crosby.
Yes, that's correct.
And what has been the result of, you know, the pattern of customers coming in and out? Are they mainly using Crosby or are they mainly using Spring?
It honestly varies on the store's level of traffic. So the staff will often adjust where they're encouraging people to enter and exit based on the pedestrian traffic. I would say it varies depending on traffic volume. So for example, on holidays or other peak shopping days, they will often bring folks in the front and have them exit through the rear or vice versa in order to relieve congestion at that corner.
And of the two, would you say the Spring Street or the Crosby Street has a wider entrance?
I believe they are both within an inch of each other as far as the size.
Other questions? All right, then I think we can move to our discussion. Commissioner Lutfi, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Move.
Thank you. Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, so we have two components to this application. One is to paint the ground floor infill and cast iron black. The current brown color, which is seen at the base, as well as the windows and the cornice above, were based on a paint analysis that was performed pursuant to a modification of use some years ago when we, when the building was seeking a 74, 711 for a change in use. The second component is for the proposed flagpole on Crosby Street. And, you know, we have varied history with flagpoles. We, in the early years of the designation, the first actually 25 years or so, we approved a lot of flagpoles in this district. And then at some point felt that the cumulative effect of all of the flagpoles detracted or obscured the architectural features. And so we adopted a rule in about the, I think it was about 2004, bracket signs to encourage people to get a bracket sign at staff level. Didn't prohibit coming forward with a flagpole, but it encouraged an alternative. And in the last 10 years or so, we have started to see more applications for flagpoles. And I think we have taken a sort of rigorous review of it on a case by case basis and looking at the size of the building and the size of the flagpole and banner relative to the size of the building and its relationship to the ornamental features on the building. And with respect to a streetscape perspective, I think that, I mean, in this case, the applicant is making the point that most of the buildings on this side of Crosby Street are the back doors to buildings that are faced Broadway. They're three block buildings. But I think that the commission reviews any new flagpole that comes in. So if there's, if, if one seems okay on the street, but there's a point where a certain number is a tipping point, the commission can say no to it because of the cumulative effect. So I think that that, the precedent is something that would be managed by the commission. So we'll begin our discussion, and so it's the two component. And I, I think the flagpole itself, well, the flag itself is, looks like it's two foot, four inches wide by nine feet long. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start this one?
In terms of the flagpole, this, the additional flagpole, I can accept it because it does two things. It turns the corner. And, and, and because the consistency of the black color on the, on the street level ties everything together. Actually, I was there Saturday, and I saw the one flagpole. And I kept on thinking, God, one flagpole. And it went away. But I think I can accept two flag.
The color. Yeah.
I can accept the black color. There was confusion about this brown, and I didn't quite understand what was happening with the brown. They took a sample, historic sample. It was brown.
Yeah.
And, and materials were going to be painted brown, others were going to be painted black. And it was going to be inconsistent in the facade. And I thought, gee, just paint it black and just make it a uniform logo and complete it that way.
Okay. Commissioner Goldblum.
I'm not a fan of the flagpole. Crosby Streets. Over street. It has, it has as it is a back door. I think that the idea of the idea, I think the black is fine, except for these windows, the, the carry visually from the building above.
Okay. Commissioner Ginsburg.
I, I think, I find the flagpole acceptable. There is other, I'll call it detritus, like the fire escapes and so on on the street. So I don't think it's going to cause a major issue. And I would agree, at least with what Commissioner Goldblum said, that the windows should be the same color throughout the building. I might also look at the cast iron metal also being the same color and then just keeping the black storefront. But I could go either way on that.
Okay. Commissioner Chen.
So I don't want to add more confusion to the, the permutation. And I, I do agree that, you know, to, to what you want to do with the, with the, the colors, if you want the commission deemed them to be match, I can support that or just go consistently. I have, and same thing with the, with either the, the, the blade sign or the flagpole. Because this is kind of unique, because, you know, MoMA store has been on this corner for the lower part of Crosby for many years, over a decade. And the real entrance should be on the Crosby side. That's why I was asking. Because if you look at the width, the Crosby side is slightly bigger than, for somewhat reason, on the Spring Street side, the steps seem to be narrower, tighter, and it's for people that are mobility issues. To be safer is actually on the Crosby side. And so I could go either way in terms of, you know, the, to me, this is really only on this corner. The back of it is all going, heading north on Crosby is mostly all, as the applicant said, back doors. But on this particular corner, just from the practicality point of view, the in and out, the main entrance really should be on Crosby.
Okay. Commissioner Lutfi.
So I like Michael's idea about the do, you know, it's okay to paint the black, but keep the windows consistent. Because you don't really want, the reason why I asked the question is you don't want the facade to look like a hodgepodge. And it wouldn't be unusual to have the doors be different than the rest of the building. So I can definitely go along with that. I also happen to agree that Crosby Street is one of the most wonderful streets in Soho because it does really preserve that, you know, old, kind of not, you know, quiet. You know, they, it may be because there are secondary, more secondary entrances, but it does remind you of, of what the neighborhood was like in a wonderful way. So and I, and the MoMA sign is on Spring Street because it is more heavily trafficked. And that is really, for the most part, where people enter. And I have been in that store when it's been crowded. And the staff does a very good job of redirecting people in and out on Crosby. And I think it works really well. So I kind of, while we have been more liberal about this, I think it would be nice to keep the street a little quieter. And I would really advocate for a blade sign.
Okay. Commissioner Master.
So I think the black color on the storefront infill is fine. I did like Commissioner Goldblum's suggestion about keeping the lower level windows, the paint color in line with the windows above. And in terms of the flagpole, given that this is an entrance on Crosby and that there really aren't flagpoles on Crosby, I, I actually think that it would be very helpful in terms of pointing it out as an entrance. So I can find it appropriate.
Okay, all right. And I think, and, and completely agree that there is something special about Crosby Street. But I think at the corner location and a flagpole of this size wouldn't overwhelm or detract from the rest of the streetscape, which we'd still be able to control and, and manage. But we don't have enough for the flagpole. But I think we can make a motion to approve the paint with the modification that they keep the five double hung windows, the brown color that matches the windows above. So Commissioner Jefferson, let me, I'll make the motion. Yeah, because I'll, I'll work on it. Okay. So in the matter of docket number 25-11243, 79 Spring Street in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District, a store building designed by Richard Berger and built in 1884 to 85. This is an application to install a flagpole and repaint the first floor infill, piers, cornice, and canopy. And I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. And I recommend approval of the black paint with modification. And I'll note that the black paint will not cause damage to any significant architectural features and that it is reversible in nature. And I'll also note that the black paint is, has, is something that historically was found at buildings that, or were masonry buildings with cast at buildings that, or were masonry buildings with cast iron elements at the ground floor and would be in, consistent, and the paint color would be consistent with the treatment, historic treatment of commercial bases of buildings of this age type and style in this historic district. However, I recommend that the five double hung windows on Crosby Street be painted the original, the brown color, which was based on a paint analysis, to retain their relationship to the double hung windows on the upper floors. And we'll take no action on the flagpoles today. So Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
I'll second.
All right. Thank you. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Mr. Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Okay. So that's approved in part and we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number nine. LPC 24-11736, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 610, lot 9, 225 West Fourth Street, AKA 229 West Fourth Street and 126 Seventh Avenue and 231 West Fourth Street and 128 Seventh Avenue in the Greenwich Village Historic District. This is a utilitarian building built in the 1920s and two row houses built in 1873. The application is to install signage. And I'll note that it was determined during the course of review, since we advertised this, that the signage in question was already installed. So we'll be looking at that today as, as, as built work.
Hi. My name is John Bedard from Kushe Studios. We're here to talk about legalizing the neon sign and install at 225 West Fourth Street. These are some historical photos of the building, showing that it's always been some sort of eating and drinking establishment, a luncheonette, as it were, in a bar, most recently, the Riviera Cafe, which actually had a neon sign at the apex. This is just a detail of it in context. It, the sign is located along the Seventh Avenue South facade, above the right corner of the enclosed sidewalk cafe. Neon, it kind of sticks out of the building, I think, three inches total. There's just some more context of the sign. This is also from the previous LPC presentation for when the building was restored. I think it's probably a couple of years ago the presentation's from. Part of that approval included a painted sign along the West Fourth facade, which we'll no longer be moving forward with. And we'll have, we're asking for approval of the neon sign on Seventh Avenue South facade in that. There's some other photos of previous condition and existing conditions that these are today. How it looks. And then these are some other neon signs that exist in the district. Upper right hand corner is the old Riviera Cafe sign that existed for many years. You have, I don't know, but we will have Fedora sign, some other kind of similar neon signs. The Fedora one, upper left hand corner, which is down the street, Smash, which is on Hudson, White Horse Tavern, Tavern, also on Hudson. That is our presentation.
All right. Thank you. Any questions on this one? Right, let's see. And we have one person who's signed up to speak, Jeremy Woodoff.
I'm Jeremy Woodoff, speaking again for the Victorian Society, New York. The Victorian Society supports this proposal for quirky signs on this quirky little village building. They're well scaled and not excessive. We especially support the use of real neon on the Seventh Avenue South elevation. It's appropriate on this eclectic commercial street, and we encourage the use and retention of this historic sign technology in all appropriate situations. Thank you.
Right. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I'm going to turn it over to Stephen Thompson, our Director of Intergovernmental and Community Affairs, to see if we have any remote participants.
Who's joining us, I assume, who wishes to speak? Please use the raise hand function, after which you will be promoted to panelist. We ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Kaylee Johnson. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HTC finds the proposed signage to be appropriate. We find it to be modest and aesthetically pleasing. Additionally, we appreciate and support the use of real neon signage. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else joining, I assume, who wishes to speak? Please raise your hand. None, I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends denial.
Would you like to respond to any of the comments we've heard? We've heard positive testimony in the first, first few speakers. I don't know if you want to address the community board at all.
I, I would just say that we were unaware of how they voted. We attended the subcommittee meeting and didn't, weren't presented with any questions from the committee or the public, and the resolution had said laid over, so.
All right. Thank you. Any final questions, Commissioners? Okay. Let's make a motion to close the hearing. Commissioner Master, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So we are looking at this neon sign on the Seventh Avenue South facade of this building. The applicant has shown that there are other neon signs and that Seventh Avenue South has a very commercial character. And we can see the scale of it in relation to the building here. Commissioner Chen, would you like to start?
Yeah. I agree with the testimonies and I think the community board recommendation as well. I think the, the, it's modest inside and this area is eclectic and then is, is modest in the overall scheme of things, so I can find it appropriate.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Lutfi?
I agree.
All right. Commissioner Master?
Appropriate.
All right. Does anyone disagree or have a different opinion on this or would like to add anything? All okay? All right. So Commissioner Chen, would you make the motion?
Yeah. In the matter of LPC 24-11736, 225 West Fourth Street, AKA 229 West Fourth Street and 126 Seventh Avenue and 231 West Fourth Street and 128 Seventh Avenue, Greenwich Village Historic District. The application is to install signage. Noting the building's style, scale, materials, and details among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of. Of the Greenwich Village Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that there's a historic precedent for neon signs among the variety of other signage types on Seventh Avenue South, a highly commercial thoroughfare. And throughout the historic district, therefore, the presence of a neon sign does not detract from the building or streetscape. That the sign is installed at plain masonry and the installation did not damage or conceal any significant architectural features, that the sign is, is small in scale and well proportioned to the sign band. And the relation does not include exposed conduit or junction boxes. That the work does not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the historic district.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second?
Second.
All right. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi? Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed, the motion passed.
All right. That's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number 10. LPC 25-09731, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 610, lot 17, 160 West 10th Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District. This is a Romanesque revival style garage building designed by E.D. Harris and built in 1891 to 92, with major alterations in 1914. The application is to construct a rooftop addition, cut back and rebuild the rear facade, modify openings, and install new windows and doors.
Good afternoon. My name is Patrick Milner. I'm here from the Chapman Group. We are a family owned and operated company located in New York City. And I'm here with Morris Ajmi Architects and Higgins Quaysbarth and Partners to present the adaptive reuse of 160 West 10th Street. It's a former stable and parking garage that we are proposing to rehabilitate to residential use. We presented the project last month to Community Board Two, and I'm pleased to note that the board is recommending approval of this project. Active engagement with our neighbors and the local community is very important to me and the project team. We have met with neighbors and other community stakeholders, and I've shared my contact information with them so that there is an open line of communication now and throughout the project. This experienced team of professionals has worked diligently to develop a project that brings together an extensive scope of restoration and thoughtful new design, and we look forward to sharing it with you now. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Cass Stachelburg, Higgins Quaysbarth and Partners. Good afternoon, Commissioners. As Patrick mentioned, the property address is 160 West 10th Street, located in the Greenwich Village Historic District. District map here showing the location of the building centrally located in the district. And an aerial view on the right illustrating the, the very large scale of this historic stable and wagon storage building, now a parking garage. It has 114 feet of frontage on 10th Street and it is 93 feet in depth. The block context too, you can see, is actually quite varied. There are lower scale rowhouse buildings along Waverly Place, our, our project site here, commission approved, two commission approved buildings along Seventh Avenue, and then this very large 17 story 1920s apartment building. So variations in scale, age, typologies across, across the block. The existing conditions across the building, the entire base of the building has been painted. It's organized with a brownstone base with, with brick. And then on the second floor, brick, all of which has been painted. Historically, there were single light windows on the lower register, multi-light windows on the second floor, and originally, just two entries flanking the central bay window. These two entries with these steep inclines from, from the first level down to the sidewalk. Additional entries were, were inserted as the building evolved over time, particularly this, this entry, which was cut into the facade. And then this entry down on the far west end of the building brings, brings cars down to, down to the cellar level. As Patrick mentioned, the overall project anticipates a comprehensive scope of restoration work across all the, the masonry. We'll be installing new single light windows on the ground floor, multi-light windows on the second floor, with some modest changes at the second floor, really to accommodate these new, the new residential uses. An overall view, again, as it appears now, there's a sidewalk bridge in front of the building, and you get a sense of the scale of the building and its immediate context with the new construction directly to, to the west on the right, and then the apartment building that fronts on to Christopher Street above the building. There's a historic iron railing that spans these two end pavilions, paired square head windows in the middle, and then these two segmental arch windows, these narrow openings on the far ends of the second floor. The proposal shown in rendering here, the overall approach is a proposed setback, two story addition, along with extensive restoration, introducing new residential entries on the ground floor where the vehicular entries are currently. We're proposing to maintain this westernmost bay as a vehicular entry to parking for a few slots in, in the basement. New single light windows similar to the current conditions at the base and multi-light windows on the second floor, as I said. Some modifications, we're, we're proposing to just slightly enlarge the two end pavilion windows to accommodate the, the new uses on the inside. And the paired windows going from 16 over 16 to nine over nine, again, to support the residential use. Clearly, there's a design relationship, which you'll see more clearly as you move back away from the building, the architected form playing on the sort of commercial Romanesque styling of the historic building. There's a, a clear linkage between material and color palette that's proposed, terracotta cladding across the addition, working with the brownstone and red brick below. And within this varied streetscape, this kind of, this kind of project, the project we think can be found appropriate. Typologically, I think it's also worth acknowledging that, that the Greenwich Village Historic District is not sort of known and significant for its two story garages. It's a diverse district with a range of residential architecture, institutional architecture, some commercial, but there are sporadic two story garage buildings throughout the district. And the commission has found a, a, a wide range of appropriate changes to be acceptable. Those include both additions, as well as even in some instances, demolition and reconstruction. So we think that the typology here also could lend itself to, to an appropriate enlargement, as has been acknowledged in the past. A bit of history, some early drawings of, of the stable and wagon storage building from the 1899 engineering record. On the right side is the main floor. You can see these inclined ramps going down to the street, wagon storage on the first floor, and horse stalls on the second floor. The building historically extended out to Christopher Street. There was a four story extension that went out to Christopher Street that was demolished in the 1920s. But it seems that the horses were on the second, third, and fourth floors, and actually, New York City horses, they, they used an elevator to get to the upper, to the upper floors. Interestingly, the building really was developed in service to another building. So originally, it served as the delivery vehicles for AT Stewart's Department Store over on the east side. And this map illustrates the position of the garage building and AT Stewart's here. And then when AT Stewart's was purchased by Wanamakers, which, which is shown in this block here and, and this photograph here, the building was converted to a garage. And amazingly, 100 years ago, this building was used for storage of electric delivery trucks. And not only did Wanamakers have electric delivery trucks, but Lord &amp; Taylor had them, most department stores had these small delivery trucks. And then the designation report, which we have a, a section of the lower left corner, sort of indicates that these were, these were, these trucks were sort of features of the, of the, of the neighborhood for decades. This was in 1969. So amazingly, 100 years ago, we had electric, electric vehicle storage and, and parking. But interesting that the building was developed, I think, in service to, to these other grand monuments to, to the east. Some historic photographs, this is photos, these are photos from 1914, when the Seventh Avenue subway was being cut. And you see, so the conditions, the building looking a little, a little rough around the edges, even just 25 years after, 35 years after construction. You can see that this, this garage opening had not yet been cut, but this original one was there, and then the one to the lower level was there. The 1940s tax photo, you can see that that, that third opening had been cut by 1940, but you can see the facade, it appears to be coated dark finished windows, dark finish across the, the projecting bay window and this prominent iron railing, tall railing across the two, the two end pavilions. Designation photo from the 1960s, again, the whole facade is painted, it's a different color in the 1960s, but you can sort of see the changing quality of the neighborhood with the increased commercialization that came along following the construction of the subway. 1980s tax photo, another range of, of paint across the facade and, and this one story taxpayer that was on the corner of 10th Street and Seventh Avenue. As I mentioned, the building historically did extend, it was sort of T shaped, and you can see in this map here, it extended out to Christopher Street. This is a view on the, on the far left, looking east, and a view, the image on the right is a view looking west, where you can see that four story structure extending out. where you can see that four-story structure extending out to Christopher Street. Historic maps, just illustrating the sort of change in the context. On the far left, the map from 1908 showing the position of the stable buildings, sort of the center of a rowhouse block. And then with the introduction of 7th Avenue and the extension and the subways, the sort of changing nature, the beginning, the building becomes almost sort of street frontage on 7th Avenue, and the change that occurred along 7th Avenue with the sort of increased commercialization of this part of the district. These images here illustrate that change. The images on the left, sort of the variety of scales and forms and signage. And then the two images, middle and right, these are these one-story structures that were on the corner of 10th Street and Christopher Street on the east side of 7th Avenue, which were then replaced by these two commission-approved buildings. On the right, building approved in the 1980s. This down on Christopher Street. And the building on the left approved actually in two phases. And this is our immediate context, the building directly to the west of us on the left of this slide, constructed in 1994, and then a two-story extension constructed in 2019. Some additional historic photos of larger-scale stables and garages in the district. Some of the buildings in the district are a little bit more prominent in scale and size. There are the numerous two-story, not numerous, a handful of two-story garages throughout the district. We also looked at this sort of commercial Romanesque style and a few things that caught our eye here. Obviously, these larger arcuated forms across the facade, but even the introduction of these sort of smaller arched-head attic-story windows, particularly at 173 McDougal Street, which felt very relevant in our design exercise. As I mentioned, there are other garage buildings in the district, and the Commission's considerations for modifications to those have ranged in both in terms of treatments and the scale of those treatments. This project was just, that was just approved a couple of years ago, this large one-story addition sort of set just behind the parapet on Washington Street, a two-story garage building with this prominent addition as well. There was a one-story addition. This is a two-story addition set behind the parapets, also on Washington Street, a few blocks to the north. This more of an institutional building, not a garage building, but again, a sort of simple two-story building with this very prominent addition as a street wall addition. So I think the point being that these garage buildings and these sort of smaller-scale buildings are not necessarily what the district is known for. In this instance, on Jane Street, a two-story garage, where the Commission found it appropriate to actually demolish the building and construct a five-story residential building with a tall setback penthouse. Obviously, not the approach that we're taking in this project, but we include these just to provide some context on the way the Commissioners have sort of seen these adaptations for buildings in the district. Just returning to some of the underlying conditions at the building, across the bottom, the ground floor, this rock-faced rusticated brownstone. Again, we'll be stripping the paint off of that to get to the underlying masonry. You can see in the photo in the middle, there was a stripping sample, which illustrates the tone of the brownstone. It's actually a very orangey brownstone and a very deep red brick across the street facades. These granite bumpers or bollards at the two original entries, and then brick piers and this simple and elegant sheet metal bay window at the front, which historically had multi-light transom windows, which we'll be restoring. At the second floor, again, coated masonry, which will be stripped and cleaned and pointed, and the windows, there are two segmental arch windows on the outer bays, and then five pairs of squarehead windows in the middle. We haven't been able to investigate the windows too closely just because of the height of the building. We haven't been able to get to them really from the outside, except from hanging out this one window, which opens. But you can see just the underlying conditions. I'll get to that slide in a second, sorry. Roof photos, the two end pavilions on the west side end with this just screen wall with the tree growing behind it. And then on the east side, that screen wall masks a stair bulkhead at the roof. And then a detailed photograph of the bluestone coping across the parapet and that tall iron railing, which will of course be retained and restored. Going back to the overall elevation and the restoration scope, I discussed this. We're going to be reusing the existing openings for new vehicular and residential entry. Single-light windows on the ground floor, multi-light windows above. Some modifications to the two outer bays to allow for a bit more daylighting for the residential use and changing the configuration from 16 over 16 to 9 over 9 in those paired windows. Just looking at the condition, these are the windows that we could get closest to at the front facade, obviously in very poor condition. It appears that the sash in those paired windows have been replaced. And this is, I think, a little bit more clear in these comparative photos. The brick molds appear to be consistent across all openings, and we're going to be replicating that in the new replacement windows. But the sash and the squarehead windows, which have far, far less paint cover, appear to be replacements, whereas the ones on the far ends look to be probably historic or original. But you can see the consistency in the brick molds for all those, and of course, a closer detail of the conditions of the brick and the brownstone. We've been just focusing a bit on the detailing of the arched-head windows just to make sure that we have the confidence that these can be done well. The Commission has approved arched-head aluminum windows in the past. Two examples, one recent at 95 Madison, an individual landmark, and on the left, 150 Fifth Avenue, which was approved about five years ago in the Ladies Mile Historic District. And this slide just illustrates on the far left, those windows installed at 150 Fifth. 95 Madison, those windows are in fabrication, so I can't show you what those look like. But this images on the right are actually from a project that MA Architects just completed in Charleston that went through the Board of Architectural Review. Arched-head aluminum windows, high-quality aluminum windows, which will be, this is, these were produced by somebody who will be bidding on this project. So we have confidence that the quality of these replacement windows will be very high. And then finally, before Christopher Courtney takes you through the design details, just a bit of a block context. The existing photo elevation extending from Greenwich Avenue on the left to 7th Avenue on the right, we're obviously situated right here, the existing building at 42 feet eight, just about 43 feet in height. And then with the addition, I think the scale of this block, a very wide range of scales. There are smaller rowhouses directly to the west, but then in the block to the, sorry, directly to the east, the block further to the east has taller five- and six-story residential buildings. But overall, the scope and scale of our addition, I think, sits nicely within the overall context of the buildings on the block, both the historic buildings, but also the recent commission-approved buildings directly to the west.
Good afternoon. Christopher Courtney with Morris Ajmi Architects. So I'll start with the design strategy for the addition. We were looking to create something that had a dialogue and a composition with the existing Romanesque Revival style. So we're looking at the existing organization of the existing building, which has a very strong symmetry. It has a very strong solid-to-void condition with the penetration in the masonry and these heavy pavilions that either had a very solid feeling. So we wanted to bring those up into the top, to the addition as well. As far as details, there's a strong cornice line that we wanted to sort of play off of for the addition, the arches at the pavilion and the radius jam. So all of those, all of those sort of exist at the top. We've got arched-window openings. The top floor also has a sort of smaller scale, just like those, the register that we can see in some of the precedent imagery that we looked at earlier. These pavilions, as well as the window openings, all have a radius-down jam. So we're looking to include that in the jams in a slightly different manner at the addition. And then as far as materiality, we obviously have a very strong rusticated base of brownstone on the ground floor. Masonry, obviously, moving up to the second floor is the existing brick, also masonry. And so for the addition, we wanted to have another masonry, slightly lighter in scale. So we've chosen terracotta, the color to be complementary to the base, not exactly the same, but slightly lighter to give a little more prevalence to the existing base. And then that would also be a low-luster finish on the addition. As far as materials, I did bring some samples, which I'm happy to... Starting on the top, on the top left is that portion of the ground floor that has been stripped. So we can see the existing brick and brownstone colors there on the top left. The bottom left is the existing lot line and rear yard, common brick and somewhat thicker mortar. The terracotta in the top middle is not, is something that we're working with Boston Valley. It's, like I said, it's meant to complement the existing brick. So once we have the full building stripped, we'll come back to a final, final color. The brick and mortar at the rear yard are meant to be more monochromatic. Cast stone, we'll see at the storefront base and the sails of the windows in the rear yard. And then sort of more secondary finishes on the right side, standing seam aluminum for mechanical and bulkhead up at the roof. The wood, the entry doors at the residential do have a wood finish, and the bronze-colored aluminum for, actually on the previous slide, I failed to mention, all of the fenestration replacements will be with a bronze-colored aluminum to sort of tie the existing and the new together. And there's a little bit of frosted glass condition also at the residential entry. So looking at the street view focused on the existing base of the building, the ground floor has a good variation of openings that were existing anyway. And so one thing we wanted to sort of tie through and look at is that datum of the transom windows. And so so those are being recreated in the residential openings. The bollards at the original garage door openings are being retained and stripped to, back to their granite. There's a smaller bollard at the garage door as well that'll also be maintained. Right, and then we're also proposing a cast stone additional base that gets added as the sidewalk gets sort of leveled out to reduce the incline that was there to get up to the higher level of the ground floor. That cast stone will sort of infill and be made to match as best as possible to the existing groundstone that's there above. And then moving up to the second floor, we have the replacement of the windows in the center, existing 16 over 16 being replaced to 9 over 9, simulated double-hung hopper windows, and then the iron railing that connects the pavilions to be finished in black as a way to keep that strong connection between the pavilions, whereas any other railings would be in a bronze finish that would also match all of the fenestrations. This is a slide just to look at street trees. So we're proposing two street trees. Any additional trees would be required, trees by zoning would be paid into the street tree fund. But these have been located particularly to be symmetrical with the building and their placement. And then also, the building has a bit of an in-and-out building line. So we wanted to sort of be, give as much clearance to all of that as possible. So that was sort of considered as well. Just looking at historic photos for inspiration for the new infills for the garage and now residential openings. So using this as a guide essentially for the new. And then we have an enlarged elevation in sections and plans here of the residential proposal. The strategy here is to create an infill that respects the character and integrity of the historic conditions, but obviously for a new use of a residential entry. Some of the details that accentuate that strategy are the glass transom above that sort of aligns with the datum that continues across the facade. The frosted glass lights on either side allow light in, but also provide privacy for the tenants inside. And then in this elevation, you can see the entry door is a bronze-framed, bronze-colored aluminum-framed door with inset wood panels. So in the section and the plan, you can kind of get a sense of those panels. We have some enlarged drawings coming up next. So here on the left is a plan detail of the side light. Here you can see that existing bollard. So we've placed the door to sort of be set back particularly so that there's no interruption with that bollard. And then here, just in general, you can get a sense of the depth of the recessed panels, both in plan and section and plan. Similarly, for the garage door, we're looking to have panelized door and a glass transom above, clear glass transom. Planning details here also enlarged on the sheet. Same idea with the bollard and the door setback. And this would be a sectional garage door, custom panels to give some paneling in depth and profile as well here. So as we move up to the building, to the addition, we can see that the third and fourth floors are both stepped back. The third floor stepped back 15 feet, and the fourth floor stepped back another 10 feet from that. Again, the terracotta finish of those facades would be arranged green terracotta, satin gloss, low luster, and a lighter color, slightly lighter color than the brick of the main facade. On the left, we have sketches of the cornice detail, starting with the existing cornice at the pavilions. That's made up by a stepped brick. We wanted to have something a little lighter for the addition. So we've got a sort of a gentle elliptical curve condition with one-step profile for the third floor and two steps for the fourth floor. On the top right, we can get a little glimpse of the stair and elevator bulkheads and mechanical screens set back from the parapet. Again, you can see that existing iron railing that connects the two towers below and sort of gives a little bit of a division between the new and the old. All other railings, all other infills are bronze-colored aluminum. Slightly zoomed-in images of both Level 3 on the left and Level 4 on the right. Get a sense of the scale shift of those openings there. Radius jams, you can see, get a sense of the radius jams that we're proposing here to be out of terracotta. And any lighting here would match the finishes of the doors as well. And then we've got enlarged elevations and sections and plan of the third floor. There will be both windows and doors at both of these floors. We're detailing all of the openings to read the same regardless of whether door or window. The door panels themselves are three feet each for a six-foot opening. In this case, seven foot six height. On the bottom right, you can see the enlarged plan detail that gives you a little sense of that radius jam condition that we're proposing. And similarly, for the fourth floor, in this case, doors are three foot six wide, also seven foot six tall. Same idea with the radius jam. Here you can also see the double step and the sort of elliptical curve of the cornice. All right, so moving through to the back of the building, starting with the section. So existing above and proposed below. At the top of the proposed section, you can see the step backs there are 15 feet and 10 feet for the addition of the third and fourth floors. We have an enlarged detail of the guardrail on the bottom left. This is the guardrail. This is the existing iron guardrail at the parapet. That guardrail is placed on top of the parapet cap. It's a large opening, so it's not code-compliant. So there will be a smaller railing directly in front of the parapet based on the dash line in the section below, which is hard to see from here, but you can't see that from the street. So, but just to point it out that it's there. What else? In the rear of the building, the dash line shows where the removal of the rear facade is that we're proposing, stepping back 15 feet to create a legal rear yard. And then the addition steps back another five feet from that. As far as floor heights, the existing floor heights, four to four, are proposed to remain as is. Additional four to fours would be consistent with or lower than what is existing today. Flipping around to the east lot line wall, existing on the left, proposed on the right. On the bottom left of the proposed, you can see a sort of cutout that indicates where the rear yard is being, sorry, the rear lot line wall is being removed and stepped back. The dash line indicates a wing wall that basically we're leaving to create a garden wall and privacy between properties. And also, the front pavilion, sort of where it radiuses and turns here, changes materiality from the street-facing brick to a common brick here. So we're proposing that all the common brick on the lot line would extend up. We're treating any material change similarly, so the terracotta also radiuses and changes material at that line, and the same thing happens at the rear yard. Photograph of the existing rear facade, composed of common brick, punched windows, roll lock, window heads, but generally non-significant elements we leave. And then an elevation of the same. There's a skylight existing now to bring light into the cellar. And then an elevation of the same. There's a skylight existing now to bring light into the cellar. That'll be removed as well as part of the, the brick wall. Removable. All right. So the proposed rear facade, the bottom two floors, as I mentioned, are stepped back 15 feet. The top two floors on the outside are stepped back another five feet and then the center another four feet. The design strategy here is really just to kind of balance the utilitarian rear yard condition with, with punched openings, but give a little bit of reference to the front of the building with some of those arches on the addition. Also cast stone sills and roll lock bricks at all window openings. And then the ground floor, these larger openings are proposed to reflect some of the conditions in the district of more sort of public ground floor rear yard conditions. A couple of images, just sort of perspective images of the, of the same materiality here on the top right is the cast stone showing for the sills. That monochromatic brick and mortar that we're proposing for the rear facade only. And then the same bronze colored aluminum for all fenestration and openings here. So now we move to sort of the center of the building at the rear facade and then the, the east side of the rear facade. And here you can see a little bit of that wing wall that's, that's remaining from the lot line wall. All right. So structural diagrams. So the, the, first of all, we are working with Silman Engineering on this. The existing structure is largely to remain with only selective replacement and reinforcement throughout. As far as excavation, it would be limited to bolstering column footings. And the interior set elevator pit. So there's a couple of elevator pits. They're all set into the sort, towards the center of the building. And generally no underpinning is required, or no underpinning is required at all. Otherwise, the existing walls to remain on the street face and the two side lot line walls. Obviously, the rear facade is being proposed to be removed and, and set back for the rear yard. And then as far as slabs, new slabs at, at the entry. Here to adjust the, the, the floor height and then a few places where we have terraces conditions, but otherwise all, all structural joists and columns to generally remain.
So I'm going to take you on a walk around, around the site. Oops. This map represents obviously the, the building at the center with a, a series of viewpoints that we have represented, photographs of, of the mockup and, and rendered views as well. So this view, similar to what you saw at the outset of the presentation, this is directly across the street. Where you have the, the base of the building, restored masonry, new single light windows, multi-light windows on the second floor. And then the setback additions at the third and fourth levels that Christopher just described. As we move up Seventh Avenue, so just looking at the, the key plan here, this is up at Charles Street. Looking down here amongst the sort of range of different types and scales along the east side of Seventh Avenue. You see, you see the addition sort of just peeking up over this western end pavilion, sort of in the context of a very much of a varied streetscape in this part of the district. As you move south, again, you know, many of these views, you're seeing the building and the addition in the context of the new construction on Seventh Avenue and the taller, the taller building on Christopher Street. But again, the setback addition, this arcuated form playing on the, the architecture, the historic architecture of the, of the facade below. As you move east on 10th Street, this is sort of one of the only views where you see the whole front facade of the building because of its 114 feet of length. And then the setback addition, obviously a purposefully built, purposely designed addition meant to have a direct dialogue and relationship with the underlying architecture of the historic facade. Flipping around to the other side. So this is now east of the project site. The garage is down, down here. And through the trees, you can see the setback additions here. And sort of paralleling the, the setbacks of the approved building on, on Seventh Avenue. And then through Christopher Park, you can see here, stone wall is, is right over here. There will be a, just a portion of the upper floor, upper two floors of the rear elevation, the simple brick masonry, arch head windows. Sort of in the context, sort of almost more like an industrial reading of this, of this industrial building off of the back through, through that slot in the park. And then finally, just returning back to, to this rendering and sort of thinking about this application in, in the context of adaptive reuse projects and particularly garage projects where the commission has found a range of treatments to be appropriate, both in terms of additions, but even demolition and, and new construction here. Obviously, we are proposing restoration, extensive restoration across the front facade of this really handsome building. Facade modifications limited typically associated with the, the new use, the new residential use, enlarging these two windows on the outer bays, but still maintaining that very strong, solid feeling and that relationship of solid to void in those two outer bays. A clear architectural relationship and a relationship in terms of the material and color palette. And a designed addition sort of in the, in the context of the, the recent, recent construction, contemporary in its expression. Yet compatible with the underlying landmark facade. Be happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you. I'm sure we have some questions. Commissioner Goldblum, did you have a question?
Second floor below the windows, where are those little boxes?
You know, so, so these, these may be like scuppers. Sometimes you see these on historic facades just to wash out the stuff. There are also, there are other ones that almost read more like fish plates. It doesn't look like there was ever a canopy. Sometimes you see those where there's sort of remnants of a canopy, but we don't know for sure, but they're historic elements that we intend to hear.
Wide was the second floor arched windows that are the
Right, correct.
What's the square footage that you're increasing?
Let me have, let me, let me have Christopher answer.
Yeah, seven feet square feet. That's the, that's the increase. It's 1% increase. And what we're doing is we're increasing the width to mask the same width of the
The required.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, yeah, for sure.
The windows are, they're very narrow. They're, and I think that, let me just say, I think for us, you know, looking at the way that facade is organized, the end pavilions obviously are these very solid brick. And we, I think we've been careful to not double the width of the openings and sort of create paired openings, but still maintain a very substantial brick outer pier on either side. So, yeah.
The windows to the left of the left garage door. Punched windows with the, with the. Thanks. It looks like they're about three feet. You've got a door underneath one of them on the left side.
The door opening is remaining as is and it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily three feet.
Might not be three feet. Okay, thanks.
Not code required.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right. Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Chen.
The double rail on the parapet. The fact that you're setting a new set, remember you're doing the details on page 38, I think on the lower left hand corner. One on the double.
The section drawing?
Yeah, the sectional detail that you had on the Yeah, this one. So I presume this, the fact that they're both remaining, one is to meet the code and one is to preserve the existing one. Is that the idea?
That's correct. Exactly. The, the existing one is not, not to code. It's, I think the openings.
What condition are they in?
The existing condition?
Call them rough. I mean, but I think, you know, they're, they're very simple. It's just sort of flat bar stock.
Are they secured is one of the questions.
They're going to be stripped and re-secured both to themselves and to the underlying parapet.
That's on the detail. It doesn't look.
Yeah, it, it can be, they can be restored.
The details of, yeah, the photo is more indicative of what's actually there. This is a bit schematic just to describe the condition.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, we're going to move to public testimony and we'll come back. We have one person in the hearing room who signed up, Jeremy Woodoff.
Good afternoon again. Jeremy Woodoff speaking for the Victorian Society, New York. This proposal bears some similarities to one we saw last week in Brooklyn Heights. In each case, the interesting facade of a garage building, not typical of the district, is being retained. This proposal incorporates the existing building more fully into the new building, which we think is a good thing. It also sensitively handles the historic openings on the ground floor, providing new infill that maintains the sense of the historic vehicular openings. The vertical addition is perhaps a bit large, but it respects the historic building and fits the scale of the neighborhood. The design seems to us far superior to the approved additions on other buildings shown in the precedent photographs. Our main objection is to the enlargement of the segmental arch second floor window in each flanking tower bay. This change diminishes the solidity of these towers. Right now, the facade reads as three elements, closed towers flanking an open bridge. This contrast is reduced by enlarging these windows. Further, there is stunning historic brickwork at these windows. It consists of both rounded and wedge shaped bricks and would be destroyed when the windows are enlarged. It isn't clear to what extent these features would be replicated. I think the suggestion that the windows could be enlarged by dropping the sills, but leaving the width the same is a very, has a, a lot of potential and is a good suggestion. Regarding the windows in the front facade of the historic building, we find the changes to the historic double hung window operation, wood material and dimensional details to be inappropriate. The windows should be restored, and if that isn't possible, the new ones should match in operation, material and dimensional details. Finally, we wish to point out two of the historic photos in the presentation that deserve a close look. And this is really not relevant to the appropriateness of the proposal, but we think it's interesting nevertheless. On slide 12, the 1964 designation photo shows the subject building along with a large faded painted wall sign for the famous Julius's Bar. Then on slide 16 is a view of a building just across the street from 225 West Fourth Street, the subject of the previous application. This view shows a large painted wall sign for the famous Stonewall Inn. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I'll turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Those joining us via Zoom who wish to speak, please use the raise hand function, after which you'll be promoted to panelists. We ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker will be Tree Nguyen.
Hi, my name is Tree Nguyen. I live at 180 Waverly. I'm here to discuss the proposed enlargement for 160 West 10th Street. Firstly, we, we value the, the, the worth of the commission and the consideration, which has been paid to the Greenwich Village Historic District. And we love living in such a historic district. We have a, we're here to discuss the sizable addition that is proposed to make and, and it's going to impact both the district as well as the, the sense of space in the area for the Waverly Place residential buildings. We understand the building will be developed within the district and are not opposed to the development of the site. Merely requesting that such development be done in consideration of neighbors who rely on this small yard as the outdoor space. And we have children who would be impacted by the loss of light and air and also loss of privacy. We ourselves have previously applied to the commission and have received approvals for the enlargement of our own home. In our application, we worked with the commission over months and months to ensure that our proposed enlargement would be contextual with the district and that we would not overly burden the, the neighboring properties. In appearing today, we simply request that the commission employ equal treatment and demonstrate the same thoughtfulness to the proposed addition to the garage building, including setbacks and limiting terraces on the upper two floors in respect to the east side that abuts our property. We look forward to further engaging in the process and thank the commission for its careful consideration of the current proposal as well as our testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Lauren Schuman.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Lauren Schuman. I'm owner, along with my family, of 176 Waverly Place, which is the bust, bust 160 West 10th Street. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today and appreciate this, your stewardess, stewardship, sorry, of this historically important neighborhood. My husband and I are lifelong New Yorkers. We feel fortunate to be part of such a historically rich and thoughtfully protected neighborhood, which is why we're particularly concerned by this proposal. We don't oppose development, but the scale of the vertical enlargement and the impacts that we have, both on the surrounding residential, residential context and the sense of open space within the donut shared by homes along Waverly Place. We understand that the, within the historic district will evolve and adapt over time. However, our request is that any such development be done with careful consideration for those who rely on the small rear yards as their primary outdoor space. The loss of light, air and privacy in the setting would have real tangible impacts on our daily lives. We also know that we have to go through this process as well. When we applied for a modest enlargement of our home, we worked with the commission over months and revised multiple times to ensure it remained contextual and respectful to the historic district and to our neighbors, especially with regard to the rear yard. In appearing today, we are simply asking that this application be met with the same level of thoughtful, thoughtfulness. In particular, we hope the commission will consider increased setbacks and limitations on the upper terraces to protect the unique qualities of this block and the privacy of its neighbors. We appreciate the opportunity to participate in this process and are grateful to the commission's time and continued commitment to preserving this historic district. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker will be Deana Taskwinter.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Deana Taskwinter speaking on behalf of Village Preservation. Village Preservation is supportive of this project. We find the design of the additions, the changes to the rear facade and the primary facade restoration with its slight adjustments to all be acceptable here, and we welcome the reactivation of this stretch of West 10th Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else joining us via Zoom who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends approval. LPC received a letter from Manhattan Borough President Mark Levine in support of the project.
All right. Thank you very much. So there was lots of support in the testimony, but there were some immediate neighbors who had concerns about impact on the buildings behind and, and if you want to address the windows some more, you're welcome to do that.
Sure. And I'll, I'll just reiterate what Patrick said at the outset, you know, since, really since we engaged with the community board middle of April, this has been an effort to communicate and engage with the immediate neighbors and the other stakeholders in the, in the immediate area. And I know Patrick is very committed. He's shared his email and phone number with everybody at the community board and will, you know, wants to do that throughout the life of this project. I think, you know, the comment about the windows and the commissioner's comment as well, I think we understand. We understand where it's coming from. The, the, those two windows are the only windows in bedroom units directly behind. So there's an importance to having these larger than these very sort of narrow slit windows that are there right now. And I think beyond just sort of dropping the sills, having them actually wider is important for light and air. We anticipate, and Christopher and I were just talking about this, we are anticipating sort of a short run of custom brick to match both the, the finish, the color and the profile of all these bricks. This is not, this is not going to be an off the shelf brick, like it's understood. And it'll be whatever many brick we need to sort of reconstruct that. But this is, you know, this is masonry work that a qualified mason can handle and a, and a, and a, a brick shop can also, can also fabricate. So we, we, we're confident. So we, we're confident that it can be done well. And I think in the context of an adaptive reuse, it's a fairly modest change and one that still really maintains the sort of reading of the central area that's much heavily, you know, more heavily glazed. And these end pavilions, particularly at the second floor, which have a much sort of heavier brick legibility, both in their existing condition, but also in this, in this proposal.
Thank you. Any final questions, commissioners? All right, let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Mastor, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Lutfi. Would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're going to begin our discussion. And this proposal is for a two-story addition on the roof. And the applicant has shown other examples of commission-approved visible additions on lower scale buildings of varying typologies in different historic districts even. And, and has described their design and materials as having a dialogue with the building below. But it also includes on the front facade, widening those end pavilion windows and installing new aluminum simulated divided, double hung windows with, with multi-light configurations and changes to the infill at the base of the building and changing, lowering the water table to accommodate the slope in the sidewalk. So we want to remember those facade elements as well as cutting back the rear facade. And while, you know, I understand the neighbors' concerns, we, we do not regulate light and air, so we will look at the architectural impact. And in this case, cutting back the rear facade actually opens up some of the green space in the back. And we can have a discussion about the design as well on the rear facade. So we'll begin that now. Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to start?
Why the developer couldn't have found a more experienced architect. This, this, this whole form is alien to this applicant. He's never done one before, certainly not in the village. Anyway, it's, it's just a great, it's great to see a project that has been done as confidently and successfully as this one. It's really great. I, I really can't say that hardly enough. I think that the building has been approached with sensitivity. The neighbors have been approached carefully and thoughtfully. The, the design scheme is, is quite modest, gentle. Of course, I do have some comments that I think they should consider. First of all, the windows, the, the slot. They should remain at the width that they are at. And they can, the sills dropped. You can put a skylight over those windows because the, the towers are actually very shallow. But I, I think that those windows are the facade. Those are the historic, historic elements of the second floor of the facade. Let's put it that way. And I think that even though I trust Higgins and Quaysbarth and Morris Ajmey implicitly, challenge of producing those extraordinarily unusual custom bricks to fit in seamlessly with a cleaned and restored historic brick that's over 100 years old, I'm, I'm dubious. I think the job would be a lot more easily accomplished with simple radius bricks on the sides to extend down. The, further, I think that, that the entrance marked here as 164, I know that this cannot be mandated, but I would strongly urge them to consider having it recall the, the four windows to the left of 160 instead of being an infill garage as it is today. This is an extensive repurposing of this building. And I believe that since this is a unit entrance, it could vary the widths of the, the, the openings. It didn't need, it doesn't need to be an exact mimic of the, the window grouping to the left of 160, but I think that the return of that kind of solidity in some general manner would strengthen the symmetry and the restorative quality of the work. Again, that's not a, something I would say is something we could impose, but it is a suggestion. I think that the replacement of the windows on the second floor in general is appropriate, but I would, I would suggest that the, the 16 over 16 was a striking and unusual. I know why you wouldn't want to have that. I think that they could explore doing 16 over one. I recall seeing that in other buildings of that style, whereas the, the nine over nines to me look a little bit. I associate them more with. So they might consider it, but I wouldn't mandate. I think that the retention and restoration of that grill above the second floor parapet is crucially important and very well done. I think that the rooftop additions are sensitive and compatible. I think that the staff should look carefully at the terracotta color, looking at it against the restored brick. Feel good look to make sure it's not a mismatch. But I'm sure that they'll, they'll do that well. I think that the rooftop bulkhead are visible from, from points in the neighborhood. And so what I would suggest is that is two things. First of all, I think that the color of the standing seam, brown tone or a gold tone as opposed to the silver, to recall the building below. And also that it might be regularized across, across the facade. Seeing it from a distance, I thought it was rather jarring to have it stepping forward and back. It kind of called attention to itself. So I think that if it's going to be visible, which I don't personally object to, I think that regularizing it in some manner would improve its visibility across the facade while of course maintaining fire department. I think that the rear yard facade is simple and elegant and beautiful done. I think that the choice of material is appropriate, the, the fenestration is appropriate. I worry, I worry a little bit about the building having multiple grids in the windows. You know, you have the upper floor on the front, the, the second to highest floor. You know, every, every level's got a different set of grids. And then when you move around to the back, it's yet another set of grids. I think it might get a little bit dizzying for the occupants, but from the interior, the exterior, I mean, I don't think that's an issue. You don't really read them in the same breath, so I think that's okay. I think that the retention of the perimeter wall at the ground floor garden is, is great, but I think that they could work with the neighbor spread or something or perforated in some ways. But then that's not our issue. In general, I think it's a beautifully, beautifully done.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg?
So I first want to agree and second what Commissioner Goldblum said. This is a masterful job and really elegant. And in general, I have very few comments. I think the point Commissioner Goldblum makes about those second floor windows, flanking windows, if instead of widening them, you could lower the sill, and I realize there may be issues that it then has to become tempered glass, it will probably make your life easier. Because the one thing I was going to say in general is as you strip the paint, there will be brick that may be a surpriser or eroded to the point you have to do something. And the matching and so on that you'll work with staff, and I have faith you'll do the best possible job, is really going to be key to making this elegant design elegant in its finish. But I can support this and I just think it's a really excellent job.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I mean, agreement. I think this is a very well-done project. And I, I agree with the Commissioner Goldblum and Commissioner Ginsburg's comments about, you know, it would be very hard to match those existing bricks, especially on the curved edges and to, given that the, the facade is over 100 years old. I, I don't have much comment, but other than that, if you look at the general proportion of the facade in the front, the only thing that stood out for me was the top, not necessarily the HVAC equipment, but in the treatment of the, the arch windows on the top. I just thought that in general, this is almost like a Roman nest building, which is tend to be wide, masonry. And the build, the windows on top seem very elongated, go into the Gothic side, which is that, and which is why you're trying to widen the building on the lower two floor on the arch window. So I, I wonder whether just somehow the rendering, maybe it's the rendering that struck me when I visually looked at it from the 7th Avenue side, that it somehow stood out. And I just, I know we're in very competent hands and great architects. So I just wonder whether the detail, that the proportion on the rooftop somehow stood out for me. That was the only thing that, that.
Commissioner Lutfi?
I mean, I don't want to be boring and just echo what everybody said. However, this is a great project. And it's not surprising, as Michael and everyone else said, this is what Morris Ajmey's office does well. They have done something like this before. I think this is particularly well-done. Because it's, there's just this wonderful conversation going on between the existing building and the addition on top. It, it seems like a natural fit to me. And the way it steps back is also respectful of the facade. But it doesn't, you know, it's fine that you can see it. It's just, it's just not a problem. It's like a, a, you put together a Lego building and it all came out wonderfully. I, I like the way the entrances were all done. I mean, look, this seems like it's three townhouses to me. I do want to emphasize that this is an adaptive reuse. So it is very important that we take all of that into consideration when we think about some of the tweaks that the applicant has made. And I really don't think they've gone too far. So in looking at, I think it's, it's fine for these townhouses to have a similar entry. I think it's lovely that they retain that bay window, which makes one of the rooms in one of the townhouses sort of a little special. I, I can't imagine narrowing, making the windows on the ends smaller. I mean, these are bedroom windows. People need sunlight and I think they work well. So I would vote to keep them that way. I think the railings are, like, have a very lovely, simple design. They're not overpowering at, at each stage of the addition. I also agree with my colleagues that the rear is beautiful and very cleanly designed and it works well. I mean, I think that people will admire this when they walk down the street and they won't feel that it looks like it's out of, that it's out of line with what's there. Now, I did want to say that in the samples that you passed around, there was an individual brick there. And I was just wondering what that was, if that somehow came from the building.
Might be the terracotta rain screen sample. So it's for the new rooftop addition.
I mean, it, like, the materials, they just work together so nicely. Again, I feel like it's, you wrap this together very well. I'm, I'm okay with it as is.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mastor?
Yeah, I'm going to echo everyone's sentiments to say that this was beautifully designed. And I agree with Jeannie. I know that there's some discussion about the two windows kind of flanking, you know, the arched windows on the base. And I agree, you know, there's a light and air, you know, it is an adaptive reuse. And, and those bedrooms will need windows. It's very important. And I find that they did it beautifully and it still does emphasize the strength of that, I guess, of that column. I also think that the front fenestration, everything that they've done is beautiful and appropriate. The rear facade is appropriate. I think that the bulkhead is very minimally visible and it's really set amongst the neighboring context of buildings of varying heights. So I can find that appropriate. I find every aspect of this presentation appropriate.
Commissioner Jefferson?
When I looked at this building, I thought, I've seen this before and, and I have, I've seen half of it before. But what's interesting about it is the facade, the facade, the two, first and second floor are almost symmetrical. The third floor is symmetrical, but the fourth floor has 13 windows. So it's, it's kind of shifting. And that, that shifting makes for a very interesting kind of dialogue with the rest of the facade. The, the only part of the facade that I find difficult is the, the garage doors. I'm not quite sure we need to know that those are garage doors. I'm not quite sure that the scale of it. It's so large, it's so powerful on the urban level. And I'm wondering if, if it was, if the wood part and the glass part were somehow redesigned, is somewhat jarring for me at the ground, ground floor level. But I think the whole thinking, the process, the putting together, the coming together, selecting, brilliantly done.
All right, so I think where we are. Sarah, could I say one more little thing?
Yes, please go ahead. Of course, it's very fitting that a former garage building would have a garage. And the, the irony about this is that the entrance to that garage is so understated that you almost don't notice it.
All right, thank you. So I think, and, and thank you all for your thoughtful comments. And I think there were some, some comments that the applicants could explore, but that aren't necessarily need to be mandated in the approval. And I think that we have six for kind of most components of this application. We, except for the windows on the end pavilions, which I also, you know, in the context of an adaptive reuse and thinking about what we've approved for other buildings, could have supported that because I think that there is still a good sense of solidity on those two pavilions, but we don't have enough today for that. So I think what we could do is an approval, just to move this along today, to approve it without widening those window openings and giving you the opportunity to come back if you'd like to come back at another time. And if at that point you want to also explore some of the other suggestions that were made, you could do that as well. So does that sound okay, Commissioner Goldblum, to make an approval to today for the project minus that pavilion windows? And, and then where we've had some one-off suggestions that are really, I would put in the category of explorations, they can think about those if they want to come back with those windows.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
I note, buildings' style scale fails. Of the Greenwich Village Historic District, I further note test on 10th Street. Bo houses recommend approval, finding that the proposed work garage building is util, is utility. Out compromising the architectural and historic primary facade. This historic district contains area and design and scale. At the proposed two-story height of the rooftop addition, back from the primary facade and the historic decorative floor, the materials and details of the addition, terracotta panel cladding, multi-light metal. At the rooftop additions, bulkheads and mechanical equipment eyes visibility when viewed from presence and visibility will be otherwise most prominent. Details and details of the proposed rooftop. At the removal of the entire rear facade for the creation with the adaptive reuse of the structure. Far as in smaller punched, arched openings at the upper floors will be in keeping with the scale. As within the block, at the lowering water table on the front brownstone base and granite rusticated cast stone and granite. At the configuration and details of the new multi-light metal and wood infill light and lava, oh, okay. That the proposed multi-light aluminum double tells and finish twelve square-headed openings. However, the applicant will not at this time be changed.
Thank you. And Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion?
Second.
Clark, will you call the vote?
Your carol?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven in favor and unopposed, the motion passed.
That's approved with the, with that one exception. Okay, we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number 11, LPC 25-09355, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Brooklyn Block 499, Lot 7506, 115 Mercer Street in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. This is a store and warehouse building designed by Julius and built in 1872. An application is to install a flagpole. Test, okay.
Testing.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Mary Dirix, the preservation consultant for this project. Tatiana Ortega from Sajo, the Design and Construction Manager, will hopefully be here on Zoom to answer questions. If she could be, if you see her, you could promote her. That would be great. This application is, is for a flag at 116 Mercer Street. Here's 116 Mercer. It's six bays wide and five stories high. This is Mercer Street, where there are flags on the block and it's not overwhelming. You can still see the buildings. In this building, the stone on the entire facade has been coated and the piers have a thick coating or a stucco. There was a fire escape on this building in the 20th century and it likely did a fair amount of damage. The stone also might not have been in, might, might have been in pretty poor condition to have this kind of level of intervention. There's a small kind of bit of hardware on the second floor, which I, I have put on a, a little arrow on, which may have been for a previous flag. Here's the fire escape. The building was built in 1872 and it, and it is a single building. That kind of double building is something you see a lot in Soho. The architect was Julius Bockel and it was designed as a store and storefront. The facade is stone and there's a cast iron storefront. This is 1940 and a designation. Here's the proposed banner. The rest of the signage is existing. The banner is placed on the, in the center of the building. In the elevation of the north half of the building, the fabric will be dark brown with white lettering. The, the flag is 610 by 410, which is, and the pole will be dark brown. The flag is, the actual flag is smaller than many in Soho, but a typical overall size, not, not tiny by any means. This is the blow up of the storefront with the, with the flagpole and banner. And this is a section. Here are some buildings that have both flags and bracket signs. The 11416 green, which is on the top right, was approved with landmarks noting, given the large size of the building, which reads as a pair of buildings, the cumulative amount of signage will not overwhelm the facade. And 115 is also reads as a pair of buildings. And these are the typical Soho buildings with flags. On 107 Mercer, which is bottom right, the findings said that noted that the, the amount of signage in conjunction with existing flags will be equivalent to the amount of signage typically found at buildings of this size and will not overwhelm the storefronts, buildings, or streetscapes. Boji is an international company. It's a men's clothing store with over 135 stores worldwide. This is their first U.S. store and it's their flagship store. Thank you.
Any questions on this application? All right. Yes, Commissioner Lutfi?
I'm, sorry, I'm just wondering why you, why the blade sign is pretty much under the banner? It seems kind of redundant there. Maybe, maybe it should have been moved to the ends on the right.
And it can be. That's, it's existing. That's where it is now. But that certainly is, is possible. We located the, the banner to be in the center of the building. And so that was why the banner is where it is.
I see. So maybe the banner could move.
Oh, sure. It just won't be in the center of the building. They're fine with it anywhere on that. We'd originally proposed it for one over.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, we'll move to public testimony and we'll come back to you. Jeremy Woodoff?
Jeremy Woodoff, speaking for the Victorian Society, New York. This application is another good example of why we think additional flagpoles and banners in this district are inappropriate. If you look at the photographs on Board Three, there is a sea of flagpoles and banners around the store, each one blocking the others and altogether obscuring the rhythms and architectural details of the buildings. In addition to that, this small storefront already has a sign in each of the three transom windows and a bracket sign. We do not think another sign in the form of a flagpole and banner is warranted or appropriate. Finally, the flagpole bracket would be attached to a masonry pier and it's never a good idea to permit new penetrations of historic facade materials. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I'll turn it back to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
For those joining us via Zoom who wish to speak, please use the raise hand function. Our first speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
Well, Commissioners, my name is Kaylee Johnson, speaking on behalf of the Historic District's Council. HTC would find this proposal to be appropriate if the proposed signage were mounted where there is already an existing armature. We wonder if another sign is even necessary on the small storefront, which already has three lighted transom signs and a blade sign. However, we would ultimately accept it if the new sign were not creating a new hole in a place where the freeze thaw cycle regularly causes damage to buildings. We ask the Commission to either reject, reject this proposal or ask the applicant to use the existing armature for the new sign. Thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom who wishes to speak, please raise your hand. I'll note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends approval.
Thank you. Would you like to respond to the comments?
Yeah, just, we can certainly work with staff to minimize the, any damage to the stone, which has already had a hard life and, and is coated with a thick coating. The armature, it, there isn't, there's no armature to the, it would be to the right of the, of that, the center pier with the coins. It's, it's a hole now. And then it would be, become a, apart from being a little off-center, it would be a tenant issue. And the, the, I can't positively verify, the construction managers on this remembered that there was a previous banner, which the tenant didn't want. So there is, there becomes a tenant issue when you, when you start getting next to their window. But as, as far as the, we would do what we can to, to minimize any, any damage to the stone.
All right, thank you. Any final questions? Ask Commissioner Chen.
So I'm just trying to be clear. As it stands right now, will either one of the signs be removed? Though the lower side is still remaining?
No, we'd like, we'd like to keep both.
But currently it will be removed, right?
No, that, the, the bracket sign is existing. So we're just keeping it. But yeah, happy to move it.
All right. Other questions? Any final questions? Okay, let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion? Fall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so this is an application for a flagpole and banner, this, at the second floor of this building. It's six bays wide. And so the applicants have placed it in the center, which is also a rusticated pier that matches the piers at the end. There's been some discussion about moving them to, moving it to a window or, and also the cumulative effect of the bracket sign and the flagpole. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner, Commissioner Lutfi, would you start this one?
I, I think the applicant's done a very handsome job with their, they've done a good job with their storefront. But I do think two things. We, the first is, I don't think we want to destroy the masonry. So the banner sign, if it's going to be kept, I don't think should be in that place. Maybe it could be, you know, closer to, it, it could be in connection with one of the windows. The only one that would make sense would probably be either on the right or in the middle. And then I think there's still this issue of on a very small storefront having a banner, sizable banner, and a blade side sign. And I, I do think from the testimony we've heard that, you know, there is really very readable signage on the front of the storefront. So I, I guess I'm, I'm not really going to be definitive, except right now and see what the other Commissioners say, except that I think that that banner has got to move so that we're not damaging.
Okay. Commissioner Master?
So I think there are many instances where we do have a flagpole as well as a blade sign, especially with a building that can, you know, handle that type of signage, which I think we can here. I mean, they have three bays and the building is significantly bigger. I think it's six bays across. So I, I do think that we should be able to have both the flagpole and the, the blade sign. As to where they're positioned, I'm not as, you know, set. So if we wanted to move the flagpole to a window, you know, so that we don't hurt the masonry, I'd be okay with that. Maybe having them one on top of the other, you know, is not the best. But I certainly think that the applicant can have a flagpole in addition to a blade sign.
Okay. Commissioner Jefferson?
My position is, I, I would leave it to the staff to decide how larger side is used.
Okay. Commissioner Goldblum?
I'm longer the day gets, the less, less, less I feel like voting for banner signs. I, I, I just don't, I just don't think they're appropriate to the district only by virtue of the fact that we've, we've done them in the past in a different economic condition and a different environment.
Okay. Commissioner Ginsburg?
So first, and this is a request of staff of the future, which may affect these applicants. Somebody's coming in with a banner sign. I'd like to see elevations of both sides of the street showing where their banners. Because if you look here, I think we should, as Commissioner Lutfi said, look at if we kept the banner side moving it over, but then there's a banner right there. And so, so I think there should either be a banner side or a blade sign. I could accept either, but would prefer the blade sign, agreeing basically with Commissioner Jefferson, I think. But I think for us to look at banners, there, you know, there is an issue of when there are too many banners. And this presentation doesn't tell me enough. And this presentation doesn't tell me enough to be able to look at the elevation on both sides and say, okay, there are three on this and so, and this is a small storefront. I realize it's a larger building. And so I, I would probably just vote for the blade sign. But if everyone else felt the banner was better, I could vote for the banner and not the blades.
Okay. Commissioner Jefferson? I mean, sorry, Commissioner Chen. Excuse me. I know it is.
That's fine. I, I share the same sentiment as some of the Commissioners. I think, given that the criteria is whether there's oversaturation of the, the banners and also the, the, I think is, there's not enough information to judge in this context, if that's the criteria. However, I also want to defer to the staff whether, is it, the attachment to the coin is, is, will do more damage and whether is, whether you do have permission to put it, if, if a, 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 the, the sign is allowed to be in the window with a bracket, with the, is that really an option? So I, I am, I'm not sure we know the answer to those.
Okay. So I think we have some mixed opinion. Sorry? Yes. We're going to take no action today. We have some support for flagpole and banner. We have more, I think, voices who, who, for a flagpole and a blade sign, I think more Commissioners are less comfortable with both and would prefer to see one or the other. But if it is the flagpole, I think there are also concerns about the location. And I think we do need more streetscape information to understand the context. So we'll take no action and we'll let you come back with that and think about the comments.
I think Mark's idea about having it to be, kind of like we have a typical, when we do a townhouse and show the block, I think it's a good idea to have like a block or two blocks, whatever.
Context.
Math thing. I think it's a great idea.
Yep. Okay. All right. We'll move to the next item now.
Next item is Public Hearing Item Number 12. LPC 25-08332, An Application for a Certificate of Appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 574, Lot 26, 36 West 11th Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District. This is a Greek Revival style row house built in 1840 to 41. The application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions.
Hello? Good afternoon. I'm Jason Allen with Workshop Design and Architecture on behalf of a 36 West 11th Street. This application is for the reduction of existing rear yard extension, the redistribution of a floor area for new code compliant yard and a rooftop addition. Flight delay, sorry. The site is located four blocks north of Washington Square Park, between Fifth and Sixth Avenues in the Greenwich Village Historic District. Particular townhome is an end home in a row of five, built in 1840 by James Harriet in the Greek Revival style. Both the San Barn and the Bromley Atlas records include the full height extension at the rear, highlighted in the centers. The historic photo and the current photo indicate no significant alterations at the front facade. Our approach is to restore the front facade utilizing much of the existing elements. Three goals we hope to accomplish with our proposal are to reconfigure the existing bulk, to reduce the intrusion into the central green space, and to utilize the remaining square footage to construct a penthouse. The site plan at the top illustrates a more dimensional detail, the existing full height, 40-foot deep rear extension in the rear yard. Our proposal calls for the reduction of it, as well as the elimination of the narrow four-foot side yard, as we'll talk. Bottom, proposal illustrates the rear yard opening up for 30-foot legal light and air. Remaining floor area is utilized for penthouse setback on three sides and a front roof terrace with a five-foot planted green zone. The rough massing view of the block for the surrounding context at the top northwest illustrates the layered and organic nature of the alterations. The lower mid-block with a variety of larger multifamily and institutional and religious buildings in the surrounding context. This contextual image is a good overview of how few shallow row homes are left on the block. Block plan, larger buildings bracket the avenues while the interior of the block is made up of predominantly three, four, and five-story buildings. Our site, highlighted in red, in the original group of five outlined in blue, with the exception of all but one building, have undergone some rear or rooftop alteration. So the continuity of original row is largely gone. Our proposal will reconfigure the bulk to reduce the intrusion into the central green space and restore some light and air, as well as some view corridors through the central green space. The existing and proposed facade illustrating the penthouse addition setback 20 feet from the street, clad in zinc over a restored masonry base. The railing visible at the front is, end to the east is metal picket. And in front of that is a five-foot planted zone to soften the railing and push it a little bit further back from the face of the building. The existing image on the left, you can see the rear yard, I'm, I'm sorry, the side yard to the left, it's four feet wide. We're proposing a base of simple red brick, full width, in a combination with group and punch windows and complimentary cast stone. Above that is the setback penthouse, composition of glass and zinc plating to keep the facade light in contrast to the darker masonry base. Existing rear context view illustrations showing the layered and organic nature of the backs of the row homes. We are 36, one in from the right, it goes all the way over to 44. All but one building have undergone rear or rooftop additions. The windows have largely been altered, as well as the upper story gutter line. Most recent alteration are neighbor to the east, not part of the original group of five, but they did raise their attic and they show some grouped window openings at the base. Our proposed rear in context, the rooftop addition illustrated with an overhang and glass railing similar to design of 42 West 11th, part of the group of five. The upper story is shown with three bay window rhythm and lower stories with group openings. View of the original full height extension with existing, existing 12-foot rear yard and a neighboring back building in the left slide. The next image, you can see a little bit more of the four-foot side yard. And then following that image, the 12-foot yard looking towards the east. The image on the right shows what remains of the uppermost story, the original row home with brick gutter line interrupted by an extension for two out of the three window bays. The remaining window itself was enlarged, the head was cut in to the gutter line brick detail, and our neighbor to the, directly to the west stripped the detailing as well and altered the roof line with a pop of about three to four feet. Sectional illustration depicting the proposed building envelope with mechanical pen in red overlaid onto the existing, the rear yard expansion from a 12 to 30-foot visible in this comparison. Another sectional illustration, the inverse relationship showing the existing red overlaid proposed, the lowered cellar, five foot 10 inches and the planted zone in front of the building as well as the penthouse. This is a good view. We've modeled the bird's eye view of the existing context in our group of five to illustrate the organic and layered nature development at the rear and tops of the buildings in our group. Continuity of the original row is gone. In this comparison, you could see the effect of reducing the original full height extension from a 12-foot rear yard to a 30-foot rear yard and its potential impact on the central green space. A rendering of the proposed facade in context with the adjacent buildings, a red, a red brick base in combination with grouped and punch openings and a zinc penthouse setback from the back facade. Plan comparison, the existing on the top, proposed on the bottom, extending our cellar out beneath our new extension. And you can see the rest of this. Good illustration of the, the side yard that exists right now, about four feet wide and the, the depth of the existing 12-foot backyard. So that will all be pulled back, flush, and extend the full height. Penthouse setback on three sides to give a little softening to the neighbors, 20 feet at the front, and then there's that five-foot railing planting zone in here. Views of the central green space and various intrusions from the other rear yard additions, notably our extension shown in the center slide. And directly to the west of us, there's a back building on our neighbor as well as the extension as part of the group of five was at 42 West 11th. Towards the eastern view, starting at 30 West 11th, the building's got a bit deeper and we continue onwards like that to Fifth Ave. Roof mockup visibility from the street is limited. There'd be some limited seasonal views across Fifth Ave. This is taken early in the year. As we move down the block, the railing is obscured by taller buildings. To the east, sightlines in Area B, you'll get a glimpse of the penthouse and the railing, which we intend, you know, that's showing it five feet setback, but there'll be some planting in front of that. Moving further west, there's no sightlines and directly in front, no sightlines either. More contextual images of the roof line alterations taken from our extension. You can see the angular full height extension of our neighbor here in the center, as well as some other significant alterations, 42 West 11th, the Rudolph Stephen Harris extension. And you can see our neighbor over here, some shorter row homes with attic stories extended. Then once you get out to 30, the buildings become deeper. There's an aerial view of the blocks surrounding the context from southwest. The group of five is highlighted in blue, mid-block with the existing massing shown in red, variety of larger multifamily institutional buildings in the surrounding context. The interior of the block's developed organically with a variety of alterations and interventions. And we've highlighted a few in this slide, but I'll go over in more detail at the end some precedents. Opposite orientation, you can see our existing extension projecting into central green space as well as some other extensions. Good diagram, it illustrates the non-planar alignment of the north side of the block, our side. We've superimposed a red plane to locate the extents of the original rear of the townhomes prior to their alterations. Some specific examples are highlighted here such as 42 West 11th. And there are also some other rooftop additions that extend beyond the original footprint, such as 52 West 11th. Overall, this context view is a good illustration of how few shallow row homes are left on the block. Imp precedents, this block has a well-documented history of modern adoptions and LPC approved applications. The first precedent, top left, is 52 West 11th with an approved rooftop addition, a large cover terrace extending to the rear facade and beyond the original footprint. It also features a visible railing from the street side that utilizes planning to soften its impression. To the right is from our original row of five, built in 1840, the original profile at 42 West 11th, shown in red, and the approved full height infill at the top and bottom and the rooftop addition underlaid, as well as the curtain wall extension by Stephen Harrison who ate. Finally, bottom left, 34 West 11th, neighboring building to the east with an attic extension, yard excavation, and a large parlor floor window and basement grouped openings. Next, 39 West 10th is a good example of large-scale rooftop and rear addition, also on block. Similarly, here at 35 West 10th, this building has a large glass curtain wall extension and a rooftop addition. It shifts to the west of our backyard. Next, on block is 18 West 11th, the site of the Weather Underground explosion in 1970 and the approved proposal for a significant four-story curtain wall. The right of that is an enlargement at 60 West 11th with a glass and metal cladding. Lastly, a group south of our block along West 10th Street are several approved penthouse additions with large footprints, similar railing configurations near the front presented here for scale and scope. Lastly, our rendering of the proposed rear facade in context with the adjacent buildings as well as our simplified massing. Diagram here showing the setback yard with the new green space. Full 30-foot rear yard welcome light and air and open up some previously obstructed view corridors within the central green space. Preserving the, the green space has always been a goal of LPC, and we hope this proposal will help restore a portion of it. Hope this captured everything and I'll do my best to answer any questions.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any questions on this one? Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg?
The mechanical space and screening up at the top seems very large. And also the screening is pulled out. Maybe that's all required for access. Is there any way to reduce the, I mean, there's no dimension of the height on the drawings that I can see. But is there any way to reduce that, spread it out, even not having the screening and just mechanical equipment?
Yeah, that's a good question. The screening is a requirement for mechanical, but it's six feet high, the screening right now, they're stacked. And the reason why it's setback so far is because we're concerned that it would be visible. We have a group of three lower buildings to the, directly to the east of us, and that gives us some exposure, as you could see with the railing. So pushing anything forward on the roof really.
I wasn't talking about, oh, about relocating.
Right, right. No, but if I was to flatten the stack out, perhaps.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I, we've tried to minimize the footprint as, as best as possible and push it back as far as we could, with the intention of it not being perceived from the street side and, you know, which is more of a public thoroughfare and more evident in the district than it would be at, at the rear of the yard where maybe only a handful of, of townhomes might see that.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions? Okay. We're going to move to public testimony and we'll come back to you after that. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Okay. Noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Who's joining us via Zoom who wish to speak, please use the raise hand function. Our first speaker will be Dean and Tess Winter. Our first speaker will be Deana Tass Winter.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Deana Tass Winter, speaking on behalf of Village Preservation. Village Preservation appreciates the proposed reduction in depth of the rear addition, but some of our committee members felt that the new design is too modern. We ask that the commission and the applicant consider adjustments to reduce the overall glassiness of the proposal so that it might be more in character with the rear of a historic row house. Thank you.
Anyone else joining us via Zoom who wishes to speak, please raise your hand. And I'll note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends mixed approval, approving of the depth of the extension, but objecting to the rooftop addition, glass railing, and the design of the rear facade.
Would you like to respond to any of the comments?
Yeah, certainly. I think it's a very unique block. It's, there are some well-preserved blocks within the district where there aren't many additions, and maybe none as significant as this. But what we found interesting about this block and working and studying was that, you know, there's actually two approved curtain wall projects on this particular block. You know, these face inward, clearly not experienced on a daily basis by anybody walking down the street in the district. So largely, I think the people that are exposed to the presence of something like a large glass facade, which we are not proposing, I think it's really limited to the residents of the block, and maybe only a handful have direct sightlines. So in our case, I think we've seen a number of precedents where there are grouped openings at the lower stories. I feel like this is a bit of a common theme in landmark districts. So we kept the rhythm of three punched openings above the bottom lower floors with the large grouped glass openings. But certainly, we can work with staff and accommodate any adjustments if need be.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, any final questions before we move to our discussion? Okay, all right, Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I'm moved.
Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so this is a proposal for a rear yard and rooftop addition. The building already has a full height rear yard addition, so there is just one bay, a fragment of the original rear facade that remains. And the proposal would remove that full height extension and do a new full height extension that would be more in line with the depth of the other additions in the block and would also propose a rooftop addition on top of that. The block features a lot of, a variety of building types, and so some deeper buildings, and also a number of additions, many also commissioned, commissioned-approved additions, including full height additions. So this is a pretty varied and developed block. Commissioner Master, would you start this one?
Sure. We don't get a lot of requests to increase green space and reduce the depth of rear yard additions. So I can find this very, I think it's great. So I think in terms of the rear facade, I think that the fenestration is something that's very typical with a lot of glass on the first two levels and, you know, something a little bit more regular up above. So I can find that appropriate. The rooftop addition, I don't think it's really that visible from the front or any public thoroughfare. I mean, I think there's minimal visibility, but certainly within what we would typically accept. I think from the rear, there is a little bit more visibility, but I think that's kind of because they did set it back. So I can find this overall appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson.
First of all, it stores the historical volume of the building. It stores the rear yard historical proportions. I've never seen that. I think the rear facade is fine. And I think what they did in the front facade was to change a couple of windows on the first floor, and then they changed the lower level entry. They did some very nice things to just bring it back. The only issue I have is the roof addition. I think it's too big, and I think we should ship to the other buildings on the block. Buildings, if it relates well to those, because I couldn't really see it. Nothing related should be.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum.
Thank you. I agree that generally, it's an appropriate addition. I do have one difficulty, though, which is in filling in the top floor of that side bay that's exposed. And I recognize this block has been highly, highly modified, and any rationale for retaining that fragment is not, in my view, based on retention of any kind of continuity with the block or retention of a sense of the row as much as it is, it's the only little corner piece of that house that is the original house. And as I've said before, for me, the importance of retaining the top floor on most brownstone rear yard additions, townhouse rear yard additions, has to do with the retention of the original volume of the house. This proposal seeks to remove the floors, restructure them, remove the rear facade, remove the entire rear volume. There's nothing left but the facade, really. And I think that in general, that's not enough. I think that the, to the extent that the rear facade does exist, we should try to hold on to it, at least on the top floor. I agree with Everardo, if you look at the block plan, there's only one, well, there seem to be two rear rooftop additions that extend beyond the former line of the rear wall of the buildings in this row between the tenement on one side and the bow-fronted townhouse on the other. Most of the rear yard additions are either towards the center or towards the front or at the back line of the original volume. So I think that it could be moved forward and reduced in size a little bit.
Okay, Commissioner Ginsburg.
In general, I find this appropriate. I think increasing the rear green space is good, and the existing conditions of the back part of the building are to be kind a little on the funky side. My one comment is working with staff to see if they could lower the mass of the mechanical equipment and screening, even if it became somewhat visible from the street, because it just seems to me very large now. But that, I think they can resolve with staff.
Commissioner Chen.
Yes, I share the same sentiment about the top, you know, since they're slight, whether there are any other alternatives to lowering or, you know, minimizing the impact or the visibility somehow. They, I, these require they take with staff.
Okay, but you're comfortable with the rear yard addition. Right, Commissioner Letfy?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the rear yard addition as well. And also, you know, just the plain of it and the glass. I mean, there, as has been said, there have been, there have been a lot of very interesting full glass facades on the back. You know, Paul Rudolph, Lee Skolnick, I mean, Stephen Harris's is not that, but it's very different. It's, I think there's room here for this. It's very understated in comparison. And I do agree about the top. It needs to be brought down if possible. And I know that there's some concern that it juts out too far in the back. That could be looked at as well, but I am concerned about what the applicant said about making sure that there's no visibility from the front.
Okay. Okay, let me just see where we are. I think we can make a motion to approve it with the modification that they look at lowering the height of the rooftop addition and mechanical equipment and explore setting it back and consult from the rear in consultation with the staff.
In the matter of LPC-25-8332, 36 West 11th Street, Greenwich Village Historic District, I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the replacement of a partial-width full-height rear addition with a shallower full-width full-height rear addition at the altered rear facade will return a more typical massing to the building and more openness to the central green space, that the historic rear facade is simply designed and only a third of its original width remains exposed. Therefore, the proposed work will not eliminate any significant architectural features or an intact historic facade composition. That except for the altered portion of the neighboring rear facade, the building is separated from the remainder of the row by a full-height rear yard addition. Therefore, the work will not diminish the unity of the row. That the simple design, red-toned brick cladding, solitivoid ratio, wide-end piers, regular pattern of the punched masonry openings at the upper floors, and a two-story opening with a spandrel at the first floor will be in keeping with the scale and character of secondary facades found at row houses within this block. That the proposed gray-metal-clad rooftop addition with overhanging eaves topped by a louvered mechanical enclosure will be set back from the front facade and will be in keeping with a variety of rooftop accretions found in this historic district. That except for limited oblique views of a portion of the metal front roof guardrail within the context of other rooftop accretions, none of the proposed work will be visible from public thoroughfare. And that the front roof guardrail will be simply designed, the minimum height allowed by code and typical in terms of material and finish. That the rooftop addition and mechanicals, we look at reducing the height or setting back the rooftop addition and mechanicals in conjunction with staff.
And Commissioner Letfy, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Ken?
Ginsburg?
Aye.
Mr. Goldblum? Mr. Jefferson?
Aye.
Letfy?
Aye.
Mr. Master?
Aye.
Favor and one opposed, the motion passes.
All right, so please continue to work with the staff, and we'll move to the next item.
Next item is a public hearing item number 13, LPC-25-08450, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, Block 1500, Lot 11, 15 East 88th Street, in the expanded Carnegie Hill Historic District. This is a neo-federal-style townhouse designed by Delano and Aldrich and built in 1920 to 22. The application is to replace windows.
Hi, everyone. My name is Daniela Tapia. I'm the project architect at Losai Architecture, and I will be presenting this window replacement project at 15 East 88th Street. This is an existing residential townhouse designed by Delano and Aldrich in 1920 that is being converted to an educational use after it was acquired by St. David's School in 2022. All right. Yeah, this is the location of 15 East 88th Street. It's within the expanded Carnegie Hill Historic District. It's right at the border on 88th Street. We have a 1940 stacks photo of the existing building when it became a part of the landmark district. It is not an individual landmark, it's part of the district. And you can see more current photo next to new construction, well, newer than the 1940s. View of the 88th Street, again, our building located at the edge of the historic district. And here we have highlighted a building that we're discussing today, 15 East 89th Street, which was acquired by St. David's, occupying the two highlighted buildings at the top here, one being the Thomas Graham Building on the corner of Madison Avenue, and the other one, part also of the cutting houses designed by Delano and Aldrich. And this is the view of 12 East 89th Street. Okay, so here we see the existing elevation and the proposed elevation, where we're proposing from existing wood double-hang windows to tilt-and-turn the windows that match the double-hang appearance while meeting energy efficiency standards. We looked into the option of the double-hang windows that do not meet energy efficiency due to their operational design, which fails to meet aer tightness. And what we have here is the variation six windows, which will meet, we will be able to see at the match the original view on the inside, as well with the square finish on the inside. And up here, we will be updating to match the original design with the dividers that was replayed at some point and didn't meet the original design. At the rear here, we have this 13-feet-high curved sash windows over here. These are the original double-hang. They're in very bad shape right now. And we're proposing to update and also to tilt-and-turn windows with a straight sash while making the existing, the proposed new panning match the curve of the sill and the header. So this is a view of those curved windows at the top there. And this is some of the existing photos where you can see some windows were replaced, adding some plastic trim at the edge. There's no original windows, it's too out. Here is the variation type six windows, the type A at the first floor. So we will meet, we will match the existing exterior and interior view. This is one of the oversized windows at the front facade, well, the only one at the front facade, really. All new brick molding is to match the existing profiles. And again, you can see here that we are very much matching the double-hang appearance. The upper sash is fixed. The meeting rail is wider than the original. That's due also to the tilt-and-turn operation. There is a very minimum glass area reduction, but that is permitted within landmark guidelines. And the tilt-and-turn operation is also a permitted change in the LPC rules where the lower sash may be changed to a hinge operation to meet energy efficiency. Yeah, so here you can see the original meeting rail is about one and three-quarters or so, and the proposed is two seven-eighths. And again, that's to allow for that tilt-and-turn operation, which allows for a more energy, sorry, provide better airtightness, meeting the energy efficiency of the windows. Those are just additional details of other front facade windows. And here's the rear window with the existing curved. curved sash. And in order to maintain the sign continuity and quality, we're in staying with the same manufacturer across both building facades where all windows are being updated. We're proposing this straight sash alternative. Again, maintaining that design continuity. And again, the new panning on these windows at the sill and the lintel will will be made to maintain that curve. In terms of the energy efficiency benefits, this is a school for pre-K to eighth grade students. And one of the goals is to enhance the indoor indoor comfort and improve the overall learning and working environment for St. David's students and staff. These proposed windows also improve energy performance, reducing the heat transfer, lowering the building's heating and cooling demands, resulting in measurable energy savings. And the environmental responsibility and proactive compliance to support sustainable building practices while aligning with the evolving energy requirements in New York City. So we are committed to preserving the building's historic integrity while maintaining sustainable, durable and technical bio viable solutions.
Alright, Commissioners, any questions? Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg?
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding with those curved windows, you're planning to put in straight windows instead of curved. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And is that because you could not get curved windows in the tilt turn operation?
Yes, that is correct. We went through research with other other manufacturers. Even one that Lisa Schaefer provided a contact for one of the window manufacturers that does provide aluminum curved windows. Their maximum height is eight foot three.
Thank you.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, let's take public testimony. Jeremy Woodoff?
Jeremy Woodoff, again, speaking for the Victorian Society, New York. We find the proposed windows inappropriate as they do not match the operation, materials, or details of the historic wood windows on this finely detailed neo-federal style townhouse. The proposed loss of the curved sash with bent glass on the rear elevation is especially troublesome. The Victorian Society is in favor of energy conservation, but not at the expense of historic and architectural integrity. Windows are important character defining features of historic buildings. Their configuration, operation, materials, and details are important. Also important is the evidence of age that comes with historic materials. The commission once required near replication of each of these window features and allowed historic windows to be replaced only when they were beyond repair. As each window feature is modified or changed, the architectural and historic integrity of the building is diminished. There are ways to significantly improve the thermal performance of historic windows without complete replacement or changing their essential characteristics. These include installation of high-quality weather stripping and interior storm windows. These are the kinds of options that should be considered if the goal is to maintain the historic, architectural, and aesthetic integrity of this historic building. Thank you.
Noting that there is no one else in the hearing room to speak on this item, I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have remote participants.
Those joining us via Zoom who wish to speak, please use the raise hand function. After which we, you will be promoted to panelists, and we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. The first speaker will be Zainab Turan.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Zainab Turan, speaking on behalf of Friends of the Upper East Side. Friends Preservation Committee questions whether abandoning the historic window configuration is truly justified. We would have welcomed a study comparing the energy savings achievable through the restoration of the existing wood sash windows with the energy costs and environmental impact of replacing them with high embodied energy aluminum tilt and turn windows. Friends would prefer wood sash window replacement for both the front and rear facades and retaining the curved form of the rear yard curved sash windows. However, we are open to the compromise proposed by our colleagues at Carnegie Hill Neighbors, which would allow for different treatments on the front and rear facades, specifically preserving or replicating the original wood sash windows on the front facade while permitting aluminum tilt and turn replacements on the rear. Thank you, Commissioners.
Our next speaker will be Lo Vanderwold.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. And you're welcome to turn off your, turn on your camera should you wish.
Yeah, no, I'm good with that. Thank you.
No pressure.
Okay. My name is Lo Vanderwold, and I am speaking on behalf of Carnegie Hill Neighbors. Thank you for this opportunity to comment. We disapprove the school's current proposal. We also believe the school has a range of options that could make the plan more acceptable. We will focus on one of these options applying to the eighty-eighth Street facade. More than ten years ago, the LPC exercised great care to preserve the historic character of the three eighty-ninth Street cutting houses that formed the original St. David's School when the school expanded to include the Graham House bordering Madison Avenue. These houses were also designed by Delano Aldrich in the same federal style as number fifteen. They are seen as virtually identical and unmistakably linked. The current project for eighty-eighth Street facade involves replacing the existing wooden sash windows with aluminum tilt and turn windows. The school's rationale for this is that it is committed to meeting certain standards of energy efficiency. However, Community Board Eight makes the argument that wooden trained double glazed windows will improve current energy efficiency, and the remaining difference is not sufficient to warrant abandoning historic window replacement. The replacement by aluminum tilt and turn windows would appear less historically authentic because of the pronounced thicker melons. Also, when opened, the tilt and turn windows would present an altered appearance that is decidedly nonhistoric. Thus, replacing with double hung wood sash windows of the front facade will preserve the historic view from East eighty-eighth Street. We also wish to call attention to a second concern. The other cutting houses on eighty-eighth, on eighty-ninth Street that formed the original St. David's School have windows that may soon also need replacement. If the street facing windows at fifteen East eighty-eighth Street are allowed to become aluminum tilt and turn, this will set an undeniable precedent for these three Delano Aldrich buildings of the school on eighty-ninth Street. So this is an important consideration, we feel. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
Hello, Commissioners. This is Kaylee Johnson, with the Historic District's Council.
Okay, I think you might have a weak connection, Kaylee. We can't really hear you. You might want to try rejoining the Zoom. Okay, okay, we can't hear you at all.
Okay.
Okay. Well, that, we don't have any other attendees. I can see if they submitted written testimony. I don't see any. Alright, I see she just raised her hand.
Hello, Commissioners. Can you hear me all right now?
Yeah, all good.
Okay, great. Thank you. Kaylee Johnson with the Historic District's Council. HTC finds the proposed usage of straight glass for the windows on the north elevation to be inappropriate. Curved glass is an important feature of the rear facade. Therefore, the windows should have curved glass with the same radius as the existing windows. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that, we don't, we don't have any other remote attendees, so I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Eight, so I'm just pulling this up, recommends denial.
Would you like to respond to any of the comments we've heard?
In regards to the wood windows for the rear, sorry, for the curved windows at the back, we did look at different options in terms of making it either wood, wood windows that will meet that height and also meet energy efficiency. They will just have to be fixed, which takes away from ventilation requirement for one of the largest rooms in in the second floor of the building. That is in 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 terms of that and that was, that will be my response for the rear elevation.
I follow up with a question. Did you explore storm windows for those curtains?
We didn't, but the original windows are in really bad shape, like the glass is falling apart. They're really not in shape for
And be repaired.
No. At least one of them is just in really bad shape.
Back from room?
Three, three, there's three windows, yes.
Alright, so if there are no other questions, we'll move to our discussion. So Commissioner Master, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so just okay, thank you, Jeanne. Just to provide some context for our discussion on on the aspects of this that we are looking at. The Commission, as you all know, we, you all have adopted rules that allow the staff to approve a change in operation to do these high-performance windows that are simulated double hung windows. And so that aspect of it technically meets the rules. So we are looking at this primarily because of the change in material on the front facade. The staff can only approve replacing multi-light windows on the front facade of a townhouse or row house with matching materials. And to replace the curved sash at the rear bay, which is a special window, which again, the staff can only approve matching the materials. So it's all sort of tied together. The each choice in this application has an implication on the other choices. But just for your context, it's not strictly the operation that is triggering our review. It's the change in material. Okay, Commissioner Ginsburg, would you like to start?
Yes, so even though you said that, I'm going to comment for a second on energy efficiency. Because there are two parts of energy efficiency with windows. And for most people, I'm repeating what they already know. One is the U-value, the more efficient it is. But as importantly is how tight the window is. Because the higher the air changes you have per hour, the more air in the winter you've got to heat, or in the summer you have to cool, requiring more energy. And the problem is, is double hung window can never be as tight as a tilt turn casement awning, just because the nature of how the joint works. So with that, I, 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 I think the use of the aluminum instead of the wood is fine. And my only question, which could be worked with staff, is for those three curved windows, if they could get replacement curved windows and put a storm window inside to meet the same energy efficiency, that might make sense. So beside, I, but in general, I think this appropriate and can approve it.
Commissioner Chen?
Yes, I'm in agreement, and I think that the, given the context of the, especially the curved window and the limitation based on the answers, I think can find it appropriate.
Commissioner Master?
Yeah, I'm happy that we have a window expert, and I can also find this appropriate.
Commissioner Jefferson?
I thought, when looking at this handsome rear facade, I thought if if we made the windows straight, but the the curb is very shallow, and it made it straight, would you see it? But after listening to all, to the whole group, I would go with
Commissioner Goldblum?
I think Mark's idea is the right one.
Okay, alright, so I think we're all in agreement. If you can make that motion, that would be great.
With regards to LPC twenty-five dash oh eight four five oh, fifteen East eighty-eighth Street, expanded Carnegie Hall District, a neo-federal style townhouse designed by Delano and Aldrich and built in nineteen twenty twenty-two. Application is to replace windows. I note that the building's style, scale, material, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the expanded Carnegie Hill District. That the deteriorated condition of the special windows warrants their replacement. That the two curved sash be replaced at the rear facade with flash, with flat sash are not visible from the public thoroughfare. That the proposed multi-light simulated double hung aluminum windows and brick mold with black finish will closely match the historic windows in terms of details, configuration, and finish. That the change in operation of the windows to in swing hopper or casement will accommodate accessible energy performance and other code requirements, and will only be perceptible when the sash is open. That the glazing in the upper sash will be in a different plane from the glazing in the lower sash, and will recall the appearance of the historic offset window sash. And the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building in the Historic District. However, working with staff, the applicant should investigate install, replacing the curved windows with curved windows and a interior storm window to meet the energy efficiency goals that they have while maintaining the curved window, if that is possible.
Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye. Aye.
Goldblum?
Aye.
Mr. Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Six in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
Please continue to work with the staff on that, and we'll move to the next and final item.
Last item is public hearing item fourteen, LPC twenty-five dash one 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 eight three. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block fifteen oh four, lot thirteen, twenty-three East ninety-second Street in the Carnegie Hill Historic District. This is a Renaissance Revival style row house designed by A.B. Ogden and Son and built in eighteen eighty-nine to ninety. The application is to construct a rear yard addition and reconstruct the top floor of the rear facade.
Very good. Cass Stackleberg, Higgins Grace Barthing Partners, back for a second time. Thank you all for staying around to the end of the day. Joined with Stephen Levine, the project architect, and Phil Evangelista, our client. As Corey noted, the project address is twenty-three East ninety-second Street. It's located in the Carnegie Hill Historic District, and the building is this brownstone-fronted row house. The focus of the conversation this afternoon will be at the back, and actually, the proposed work, other than reconstructing a stucco clad upper floor in red brick. The extension off the back of the building is not visible, and I'll show you that, but the work on the front, there's an extensive scope of repair and restoration work, just for for context. This building, twenty-three, was built with a group of at least five, perhaps six, other row houses. And you can even see the two flanking buildings And you can even see the two flanking buildings are part of that row. There's already quite a bit of variation on the street facade, and that carries through to, to the rear of these buildings. An aerial view with 23 highlighted in yellow, 20, 92nd Street at the bottom. And then these are the houses fronting onto 93rd Street. And just a few things to point out in this slide. So looking at the, the sort of eastern portion of this block, there are a number of four-story extensions off the back of these houses. Some may predate designation, but others are commission-approved. There are also houses with four-story extensions and rooftop additions. The scope of work here is, at 23, is really just, just reconstructing the rear facade and, and constructing an extension off, off the back of the building. Flipping around and now looking at the back of the houses that are part of the row. So again, 23 is highlighted here. And you begin to see sort of the variety that occurs on the backs of these houses, varieties in, in finish. Only one of them at 25 is, is red brick, the others have been coated. There's a one-story extension at 25, which occupies about three-quarters of that roof. And then extensions down the block of three, four, and five stories off the back of this, of this group of houses. So there isn't sort of that harmonious reading of the back of the house. There are skylight additions and other reconfigurations that have occurred over time off the back of, the back of these houses. Looking now more directly, this is 23 here, 23 is 92nd Street, flanked by 25 with that one-story extension off the back elevation, asphalt and, asphalt and covering on the back of 21. And then the, the buildings to the east portion of the block. And you can begin to see there are extensions that are of varying depths, widths, heights, all the way along this block front. The other thing I'll point out, and I'll show you a little bit more detail on this in a second. But the back of 23 East 92nd, there are at least four different campaigns of reconstructions off the back of this house, the lower levels extending extensions, widening extensions, et cetera. So a lot has happened off the back of this house alone. Turning to some historic maps, this is a, on the upper left is a map from 1890. And what's interesting about this is this was a map published when the building was constructed or the row was constructed. And interestingly, even in this plan, you know, all these buildings were designed by A.B. Ogden roughly at the same time, and many of the same details on the front of the buildings. You can see at the backs, there were varying footprints and widths and depths even in these early maps. And then as we go through the 20th century, this map on the lower left from 1960, again, sort of showing the evolution of the extensions off the back of these houses, or varying depths and widths, et cetera. And then a straight view looking down. And as you'll see in our block plan, there's a range of three, four, and five extend, three, four, and five-story extensions off the back of, of this row alone. Turning to, to our proposal, so on the left is an existing extonometric, on the right is a proposed. So again, you can see the sort of variety of volumes that exist off the back of 23. There's a two, a two-story extension and then a one-bay extension at this level. And basically, what we are looking to do, the back of the houses, you'll see in detailed photos, is covered in a cement stucco and also is parched. So we're looking to reconstruct the back, upper floor of the house in line with its neighbor at 25. As one moves west down the block, there, there, you lose the alignment of these adjacent buildings. That's an existing condition, and you can see that in the, in the photograph in the previous slide and also in these line drawings. And then basically, this two-story extension reconstructing this in red brick, and then a, a two-story extension here in the mid-zone of, of the elevation, all sort of tucked back within the footprint of, of the existing extension. The back of the building will be reconstructed in a, in a red brick, stone lintels and sills, multi-light wood windows, iron railings on, on the setbacks. A view from, from the, the base, and it's from, from the ground level, it's a little hard to see the connection, but perhaps in the existing, you can see this important relationship is maintained at the top floor. This relationship between these two houses where the floors actually do align is already a bit obscured because of the, this extension, this one-story extension on the adjacent property. But you can see the sort of variety of volumes that exist off the back of this row. An existing block plan with 23 highlighted, and you can just see the, the range of different heights, three, four, and five, as well as some one-story extensions on the south portion of the block and on the north portion of the block, some of these four-story extensions, some of them quite deep, others a bit shallower, some historic, some commission-approved. And then a proposed block plan here highlighting at 23, showing the, the four-story extension tight to the building and then the two-story extension at the current volume in plane with the existing footprint of, of the extension and in the context of the other buildings in the, in the block. Some additional photographs of, of the back of the houses that exist today. As I mentioned, there are four different campaigns. Originally, it looks like there was a, a one-bay wide two-story extension that first got extended to three stories. Then it was, the, the ground floor was, was made full width, and then a second floor was added. And eventually, the firescape was added. So there are a number of alterations that have occurred across the back of the building. And then the photo on the right, just illustrating the current conditions at the lower two floors. Detail looking back into, into the rear yard and at the ground floor of the house. Some photographs of the back of the house. So as I mentioned, the upper floors, this photo on the upper left, the upper floors have been parched. The lower floors have been sealed. We cannot get that off, so we're proposing to reconstruct in a, a common red brick, similar to what would have been there, and a proper stone coping, replacing those terracotta, camelback copings, and removing, removing the firescape. And then some detailed photographs of the existing conditions at the back of the house, as I said, with the, the stucco coating as well as, as the parjing. Looking now a little bit more detail on the back of the houses directly across from 23. So again, there are some houses, this, we think this may predate designation from 1974, but it's a, a very deep four-story extension and then four-story extensions, commission-approved at these two houses, which have four-story extensions with a common top floor, creating that relationship between the houses in that row. Another view looking down to the west, again, showing the backs of the houses on the 92nd Street side as well as the 93rd Street side. Highlighting those, those two projects, as I mentioned, that were commission-approved extensions, four stories with an extension at, at the lower level, and reconstructions of, of the rear elevations. Comparative axons, I think I've talked about the volumetrics here. But again, sort of maintaining the relationship that exists between 23 and 25, that because of the step-down, that is not present as you move west, but maintaining that with the house directly to the east. An existing section, just sort of noting, I think, this back wall here, and then the proposed section where that back wall is in the same plane. And really, the, the element that's being added is, is this, this piece here, which provides a bit more space for some of the bedrooms at the back, at the back of the house. Sorry, let me go back one. This detail just illustrating that we're going to be reconstructing, you know, the back of the elevation and introducing the corbeling, matching the corbeling that exists to the, to the houses to the west with the, with the stone coping at, at this uppermost, this uppermost portion of the elevation. Rear elevation, as I mentioned, multi-light wood windows, a steel multi-light system at, at the garden level and iron railings painted black. Some samples, a simple glengarry common brick, stone lintels. Currently, they're marble. We, we prefer to go to something a little bit more durable, but in the same sort of tone as the marble. And then finishes for the other, the other elements that we're working with the staff on. Some details of, of the infill, the steel and glass system at the lower level and wood window details, simple brick mold, similar to what you'd see off the back of a house of this, of this age, slight profile, but consistent with what one would see from an 1890s house. Floor plans, I'll go through these relatively quickly, but I'm happy to come back to them, just illustrating that the, the rear yard remains at 20 or feet, 22 feet, with no, 26 feet open in the rear yard. And then as you continue up the house, reconfiguring those mid floors, and then at the top floor, maintaining that back wall in its current plane. And then the roof stair and elevator bulkhead, mechanical equipment behind that. And then a bulkhead plan. And then finally, just a rendering, I think, you know, in the context of, of the conditions at the back of the house, the, the parjing, the stucco, the history of alterations that have occurred, we think that this proposal could be found appropriate. There are significant irregular conditions across this portion of the row. And what's being proposed is similar to what has been approved elsewhere in the historic district. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions? All right, not seeing any questions right now. I'll note that there is no one in the hearing room to speak on this item, so I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Those joining via Zoom who wish to speak, please raise your hand. Our first speaker will be Zainab Turan.
Hello again, commissioners. My name is Zainab Turan, and I'm speaking on behalf of Friends of the Upper East Side. Friends can support this application for a rear yard, a rear yard addition. I'm sorry, it's too hot and too late. We believe the proposed design is a significant improvement over the existing condition, both in its volume and the use of brick surfaces. It also aligns well with the rear facade of the adjacent building at number 25. We can also support the proposed bulkhead, which will be clad in zinc standing seam metal panels. We find it appropriate since it is set back and will not be visible from any public thoroughfare. Friends also appreciates the applicant's responsiveness to concern raised by Community Board Eight, particularly the revision that removed the six-foot rear yard extension at the lower level, thereby preserving the open space within the rear yard and the central donut. Thank you, commissioners.
Our next speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
Hello, commissioners. Kaylee Johnson with the Historic Districts Council. HTC finds this proposal to be largely appropriate. However, we would prefer to see a three-story rear yard extension at full depth and width with the fourth and fifth stories in a setback plane similar to the adjacent building at 25 East 92nd Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lo VanderVolk.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
You can, yes, yes.
My name is Lo VanderVolk. I'm speaking on behalf of Carnegie Hill Neighbors. We note that the, the applicant has backed away from the rear yard extension that had been proposed during the Community Board Eight presentation. And we're, we're very pleased with that because now, now all three adjacent buildings, 25, 23, and 21, will have similar rear yards. Also, just a minor, a minor thing is, I believe that, I believe that the brick facing of number 25 is, is possibly Flemish bond, and we wonder if the applicant couldn't benefit from a more enhanced bond brickwork than is currently being proposed, which is the regular bond that we see everywhere. Those are, those are our main comments. Thank you so much.
Being that we don't have any additional attendees on Zoom, I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Eight recommends denial.
Thank you. And it seems that, that Manhattan Community Board Eight saw a slightly different proposal, and that may be why they recommended denial. We heard from others that you've made some changes. Do you want to address the, the brick pattern?
I'm happy to go back to a photo. It, it looks like it's a common bond. It would be unusual to have a Flemish bond pattern off the back of a row house. Let's see if I can get to a photo. And while I'm doing that, I will note that when we presented this to the community board last month, we were kind of surprised by the response. We were originally proposing just a six-foot extension at that lower level. And feedback from the immediate neighbor and from Carnegie Hill Neighbors, as well as the community board, we reached out to the neighbor, conversations with them, and we, we scaled that back. So I appreciate the acknowledgement and recognition of that modification. Let's see. All right. If you look here, I'm seeing, you know, rows of headers interspersed and separate with rows of stretchers. So I'm pretty sure this is a common bond. So we prefer to have sort of a more typical detail off the back of the house.
Okay, thank you. All right, commissioners, any final questions on this one? Okay, so let's, Commissioner Master, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so this is a proposal to construct a four-story rear yard addition. It would not project out any deeper than the current addition, and in fact, the upper floors would project even less and be less than other neighboring additions. And this stepped massing is evident in other four-story rear yard additions that the commission has approved in this block. And it also includes reconstructing that top floor, which is parched and stuccoed and has no corbelled cornice any longer, with a new brick to match and recreating that corbelled cornice. Commissioner Goldblum, would you take this one?
In what sense? I'm going to buy it. It'd be fun to, fun to live here. No, I think it's fine. I think it's totally appropriate. It, it follows. What struck me about the application is, is how Mark's Preservation Commission, I mean, it's not, shouldn't be too, too controversial to say, we're reshaping the city. And if you look at this block, which is probably not uncommon in brown townhouse blocks, we found three or four different, or two or three different additions that we've approved that all kind of follow a certain pattern and template, and that create a new environment for the donut spaces in townhouse neighborhoods. And I think it's great. I think this is a totally appropriate addition and a, a, a very responsible way to handle what is, what is very much a, a mess of a backyard, both for the individual building and for the overall donut. Interesting, worth noting is how this addition, while, while it's appropriate in and of itself because of the way it's been designed relative to the existing house, actually brings order to the row by kind of uniting them into a composition, even though I don't know if that was intended. I think it's kind of nice, and it, it makes some order out of, out of chaos. So I think it's great.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
I agree with Commissioner Goldblum, appropriate.
All right, Commissioner Chen?
Same here.
Commissioner Master?
Appropriate.
And Commissioner Jefferson? Okay, I think we're all in agreement. Mark, oh, sorry. Commissioner Goldblum, would you read the motion and then we'll vote?
Sure. Regarding 23 East 92nd Street in the Carnegie Hill Historic District, the application is to construct a rear addition, reconstruct the top floor, rear facade. I note the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Carnegie Hill Historic District and the Expanded Carnegie Hill Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed four-story rear yard addition will not be visible from any public thoroughfare, and only a limited portion of the reconstructed top floor of the rear facade will be visible from the public thoroughfares to, to the east on Madison Avenue, that other rear yard additions of similar heights and depths exist within the block. Therefore, the proposed rear yard addition will not diminish the central green space, that the rear yard addition will not rise to the full height of the building, thereby preserving the sense of the building's original form and fenestration as part of a row, that the design and materiality of the rear yard addition, featuring brick cladding, brick-finished wood, metal, multi-light window and door assemblies, and black-finished metal railings will be in keeping with the residential character and scale of the building and other buildings in the block, that the top floor of the rear facade has been altered with the application of stucco coating and removal of corbelled brickwork, therefore, the reconstruction work featuring full-width brick cladding over an insulated metal stud wall, cast stone lintels and sill, corbelled cornice will return the facade closer to its historic appearance, that the buildings to the east in the row step down with the topography, and the buildings to the west, building to the west has been altered with a raised facade. Therefore, the widening of one window and lowering of one sill to create a door opening after reconstruct the top floor will maintain a rhythm of top-floor openings, will not disrupt the unity of the row, and the multi-light windows and doors will harmonize with the addition below, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the building or the historic district.
Thank you. And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Mark, will you call the vote?
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen? Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Mr. Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner?
Aye.
In favor and none opposed, the motion passed.
That's approved. Thank you. And that concludes our public hearing for today, June 24th, and we will meet again on July 8th. Thank you all.